Good evening and welcome to the special meeting in the Independent School District 279 School Board, Tuesday, August 4th, 2020. Pursuant to Minnesota Statute, Section 13D.021, in a current state of emergency due to the COVID-19 pandemic, this special meeting of the Independent School District 279 School Board will be conducted via electronic means. Consistent with current state and federal pandemic guidance, Superintendent Corey McIntyre, myself, Board Chair Mike Ostafi, determined that due to the health pandemic and emergency declaration, a meeting format allowing for open in-person attendance is not practical or prudent. As a result, it is unfeasible for at least one board member, the superintendent or general counsel, to be physically present at the special meeting location. It is also not feasible for members of the public to attend at the special meeting location. Members of the public may monitor the meeting electronically by streaming online from the district website. An archived recording of this meeting will also be available on the district website. So the special meeting, the Independent School District 279 School Board, is called to order at 6:05 PM on July 21st, 2020. Board members joining us by video conference, please respond when I call your name. Director Kelsey Dawson-Walton.
Here.
Director Heather Douglas.
Here.
Director Jackie Muscata-Jones.
Present.
Director Tanya Simons.
Here.
Superintendent Corey McIntyre.
Here.
And I, Mike Ostafi, am present. All members of the superintendent's cabinet and several district administrators are also logged into this video conference this evening. There's one item on this evening's agenda, which is the recommendation for the instructional model for the beginning of the 2020-2021 school year. Superintendent McIntyre, it is all yours.
Thank you, Chair Ostafi, and welcome, board members, members of our administrative team and those in our viewing audience. Tonight, we have this special meeting to provide you with an overview of the Minnesota Safe Learning Plan, review three learning models that we've been working on, and the key components of the hybrid model from multiple departments in the district, along with my recommendation as a starting point for the start of the school year and for the board decision to allow the administration to move forward. As the presentation's coming up, I'll kind of set the stage here just a little bit. We believe that making the decision tonight provides our families the opportunity to make decisions that are best for their children and for their families, and it also provides the district and staff with clear direction and as much time as possible for the planning for the start of the year. I do want to acknowledge how complicated and complex the situation is. It's really challenging. There's no clear or easy answers. Districts around the state and around the country are really wrestling with this. It's really hard to find a solution that everyone will agree on, and there's clearly a wide range of perspectives and beliefs on what we should do, and it comes along with very high emotion and high expectations. As we continue to monitor the activity of the virus, this model for, framework for districts to make decisions about needing to move in and out of different scenarios is one that's been proposed by the state. And the recommendation tonight is based on the data and the planned components developed by the Minnesota Department of Health and the Minnesota Department of Education, along with district collected information. And like was referenced earlier with me tonight, there's many of our district and building administrators to help with tonight's presentation, and I want to say thank you to all of you for being with us tonight. We met early this morning and again late today, so I'm grateful for our leaders joining us again tonight. Like our last meeting, board members, I think it might make sense to make a note of your comments and questions as we go along and save those for the end, so we can get through all the material that allows you to be fully informed for any comments or questions you have at the end, and really provides you with the entire picture. And to start the presentation tonight, I'm going to provide a review with you of the key elements of the Minnesota Safe Learning Plan and the parameters that we've been given as school districts in Minnesota, and then I'll turn it over to our members of our administrative team to walk through some of the key features of the proposed hybrid learning plan. So if we can go to the next slide there, Anthony. In mid-June, the Minnesota Department of Health and the Minnesota Department of Education outlined three likely scenarios for the new school year and directed all districts to prepare for all three of those scenarios, and we've been talking about that ever since with the board. We were directed to develop options for in-person learning for all students, hybrid learning with strict social distancing and capacity limits, and distance learning only, as it evolved in a kind of a version of what we did last spring. We anticipated this guidance in early June, and we got a running start on that, started ahead of that guidance, have been working with a team that was really working on our fall 2020 school opening planning process. And that team comprised of 67 members, it was a large group, representative of employees and union representatives from across all of our employee groups in the district, included our cabinet acting as a steering committee, and that larger team was broken into four specific work groups, instruction, operations, resources, and communications, and stakeholder engagement. And as I referenced last meeting, that those teams at the time had met over 41 times over the period of time, and I think there was a few additional meetings that have been held since to continue the work in preparation for where we are today. Similar to our experience in March, when we had to put together a new way of providing that school experience, in just a few short days, this team again stepped up, right, put in many hours to prepare as much as possible in a very short period of time, and we've completed a tremendous amount of work with expansive depth and breadth in the plan. We've shared our progress at the July 21st School Board meeting, and then on July 30th, we learned about Governor Walz's executive order 20-82 that states that Minnesota Public Schools must adhere to parameters determined by MDH in implementing or shifting between the three models laid out in the 2021 school year planning guidance, that in-person learning, hybrid, and distance learning options. So just a few pieces here before we move on to the next slide, and this is a good spot to pause this with some background. So there are a few key elements of the Minnesota Safe Learning Plan, and I think it's important to cover and share as some grounding for all of us and for our listening audience regarding direction that's been given to our school districts across the state. And to begin the 2021 school year, the Minnesota Department of Health has developed parameters using county public health data to support the determination of learning models for each school district and charter school. These parameters are detailed in that plan, the Safe Learning Plan and Model Guidance section, and we're going to use a review of many of those components tonight. While there are many factors to take into consideration when determining an appropriate learning model for school opening, the decision-making process really centers on local data from the county level, including the level of viral activity in the county. If a school district or charter school is considering moving forward to a more restrictive learning model, then that's required under the Safe Learning Model, it must, and it's required, that it must consult with local public health officials, MDH and MDE, through regional support teams that will be in place by August 24. And pursuant to the state statute, the education commissioner is always authorized to order a school district or charter school to dial back that more restrictive setting if there's a determination in consultation with the Department of Health that the learning model being used is no longer safe. More restrictive models can be necessary, even down to the classroom level, if, for example, there's a household exposure, and MDE's guidance outlines those processes, and we will touch on some of those. And we've all been discussing the fact that the state guidance does require a distance learning option to all families who choose not to attend in-person learning due to medical risks or any other safety concerns, and that families are not required to provide any documentation of those risks to opt into that model. We've been working on that Distance Learning Academy that you'll hear more about later tonight. All right, thank you for that background. I'm going to move into the next slide here. The model parameters for the base learning model for the start of the year, and I think it's critical to mention multiple times, this is just the starting point for the start of the year, that school districts and charter schools will use and will be advised on, it'll be a weekly rate, a weekly by, a weekly case rate, the number of cases per thousand over a 14-day timeframe. And so this, these parameters here outline the range in the models that are recommended or districts are expected to follow based on the number of cases per 10,000 over those 14 days. So it ranges from in-person learning for all students to in-person learning for elementary with hybrid for secondary, hybrid learning for all, hybrid learning for elementary with distance learning for secondary students, and then distance learning for all students at the highest end. Next slide, please. The case rate data, number of cases by county of residents in Minnesota over 14 days is really taken by dividing that into the county population divided by 10,000, that just gives us a 14-day county-level case rate per 10,000. So there's a visual way of seeing the formula, and it's by date of specimen collected, so when the person was tested, that's how the common variable is for the formula. And while any increase in case incident represents greater potential for risk, the guidance we've been given is schools may consider a bi-weekly case rate of 10 or more cases per thousand to be an elevated case, or elevate a risk of disease transmission within the local community, especially when the level of cases per week is sustained or is increasing over time. Next slide, please. So this slide here is the most formal data we've been provided with so far. We do expect some additional information this week. This slide gives us that recent trend for Hennepin County, for all school districts in Hennepin County. And this moment in time, it really expects all school districts in the county to be looking at a hybrid model for all students, based on the most recent data, which we are recommending tonight, and there is not, to my knowledge at this point, any school districts in the county that would be able to consider fully bringing all students back, and some have opted for full distance learning. We did get some informal additional data points that we're looking to verify and another, the next data point for the end of July, and that seems to put us in the same, about the same range as the most recent formal measure there, just slightly over 20, so consistent with the last data point. All right, so next slide, please. After the initial selection of the learning model here for school opening, the decision to shift to an alternate of learning model would center around that data and the impact of the COVID-19 at the school level or the district level, and really just monitoring and evaluating viral activity in the community and throughout the county, that bi-weekly or weekly county-level case data. School districts making a change in their learning model must do so, really keeping clearly the most important piece of safety and for our staff and students, keeping those safety precautions in play. It's also important to respect that we all understand a shift in learning model has just a large impact on the community, on our families, on our students, and on our staff. So making a change requires significant coordination and communication, even when well-thought-out plans are in place. And so therefore, any recommendation or decision to change won't be taken lightly, it will be very thoughtful and highly communicated out, because we just know how disruptive it can be. And just to kind of highlight on this slide, our current county case rate puts us in that hybrid learning for all students as a starting point for districts in Hennepin County. Thank you, next slide. Okay, so this just reflects, as the increasing viral activity goes up, the likelihood of moving from into a more restrictive model would be likely, it just depends on the rate and how severe the viral activity might be, while we continue to prepare and build capacity to mitigate those different models and be ready to mitigate the virus. Next slide, please. So kind of as I've walked you through here, the, a couple of just additional points I'll make before I get into the details here, in the, I almost missed this, the Safe Learning Plan also does provide Minnesota schools, all public schools with masks for students, staff, and also disposable face masks for students, as well as face shields for our teachers and for 50% of nonlicensed staff. So that process has already started, we've got information earlier today about getting that moving forward. Also, in the plan is information about the regional support teams I referenced earlier. Beginning August 24th, districts will work with regional support teams designated by the Minnesota Department of Ed to consult and coordinate implementation and ongoing evaluation of the learning model and the virus activity. Then there's also a large section in the plan regarding testing, COVID testing processes. The state plan outlines a plan for state partnerships and strategies for testing, as long, as well as scenarios and thresholds. So if larger testing is needed, more intensive state-level support comes to help the districts out. Okay, next slide, please. And this is just a visual representation of the steps that I've kind of outlined here. I wanted to, or to kind of see how those five steps I've kind of been walking through are mapped out visually. Okay, so if you could move on, please. So just a few thoughts that I have that I wanted to share with the board. You know, according to the last available data from the county, schools in the county really can implement, it's recommending the hybrid model, it's putting us in that place as far as the guidelines go. Like I said, 100% in-person is really not an option for any school districts in the county at this point, and over time, numbers may suggest a more conservative model, such as moving more towards distance learning as we watch the activity of it. We are, we're in this space that we all can kind of acknowledge that we're building another new temporary model for school to bridge us through this international public health crisis, and it's something we haven't done before. I've shared with our team and anyone that'll listen that we stepped up and had to build a new model in March, and here we are again, needing to create another way to do school in the summer here into August. So it's been very challenging from that standpoint, but I believe in our team and the way we are stepping up to make this happen again. So next slide, please. I did want to cover some highlights of our staff and family feedback and input that we've been collecting over the summer, and so if we go on the next slide. The challenge with this is things are moving so quickly, and it's really challenging to kind of keep up with how fast things are evolving, but, so I just really want to acknowledge that this is a moment in time, and this was about four weeks ago when we were able to finalize this information, so we'll take it with that perspective in mind, but I think it is helpful for us, it does give us some additional information. When we asked our families for their preferred model, whether it was in-person, hybrid, or distance learning, our families overall chose at a 68% rate, being in-person was their preference, and the hybrid scenario was just slightly behind that at 66%, just two percentage points behind. None of our groups preferred the distance learning option as their first option, and the rankings of the distance learning was in the 30% to 40% range. Four of our six racial groups, our Asian, Black, Hispanic, and non-white racial groups preferred the hybrid scenario, and their preference range was between 71 and 74%. That was their preferred model. And overall, families preferred to, if looking at a hybrid model, have students attend some days of the week and not every day of the week in partial days. They really felt like just some days of the week was preferable. Next slide. When we drove, look a little deeper, and like I said here, some, really the preferences were for some days every week versus in-person part of every day, like in the morning or afternoon or AM or PM model. When we look at our district-wide ethnic groups, 11 of the 14 also preferred that same hybrid approach with parts of the week, and same with our families and students who receive free reduced lunch, English learner services, special education, and homeless. That also held up across the grade ranges as well. Another comment too is about childcare. What we learned through our survey is there's about 30% of our families that feel like they will need childcare before and after school, or during those times or days when they're not in school, and that was pretty consistent, especially at the elementary level, right around that 30% range. Next slide. Some key findings from our staff survey through our Human Resources Department, or as well as the, that was one survey, we also had our staff participate in our Learning and Achievement Department survey, the one that the families participated in as well. You can see the number of respondents here that participated. So some key findings here was, this one kind of simply asked whether staff planned to return to work. About 91% of our staff expected to return, there was about 9% that felt like they would not be able to return, and then when we asked, next slide, please. We, when we asked that in a different way about what models people are comfortable returning to work in, in our staff, the hybrid model was at 56%, which was higher than our in-person model at 45%. Clearly, our staff felt with 77% the safest in the distance learning model. We have about 22% of our respondents are just under 400 staff that have identified that they may fall into a high-risk category, and Laurel's going to talk later tonight about the process we are going through to work through and verify and support staff that might be in those high-risk categories. All right, next slide, please. So at this point, I'm going to turn it over to Assistant Superintendent for Elementary Schools, Steve Flesk, and we're going to give you some updated information from, heard in July, and you'll hear from other members of our administrative team as they share the key features of the instructional elements of our hybrid learning plan. So Steve?
Thank you, thank you. Good evening, Chair Ostafi, Superintendent McIntyre, Cabinet, and our viewing audience. Again, I have the pleasure of sharing with you a brief overview or key features of what the work has been accomplished to date in terms of our instructional core group. And just to kind of set the context again, this group worked during the summer with over 20 volunteers, which consisted of district administration, which you're going to hear from me, as well as school administration, teachers, and our coordinators from Learning and Achievement, Department of Educational Equity, and Student Services, all working together on this. Next slide, please. So as I've shared at the, on the 21st, the work that we accomplished all was framed around the guidance from MDE and MDH. Also to the, you're going to hear tonight, a little more around special education and EAL services, but this was the center point to the planning and the discussions of each of the, each of the groups. We talked a little bit about focusing on essential learnings, here are a little more about that this evening as that gets shared at both the elementary, middle, and high school levels. Again, attendance and learning will be assessed, attendance will follow MDE guidelines, and a lot of work has been going on, and this, actually, starting this week, we're going to be, we're working and meeting with our principals specifically around our COVID safety plan, and that you're going to hear a little more about from Ron Meyer and his team later on in the, in the presentation. Next slide, please. So as Corey mentioned, hybrid, the A-B schedule, which we shared with you before, five days of learning, two in-person days with three distance learning. Schools have been busy on this element where they're collaborating with transportation to assign those student groups, and that has been a pretty significant process that's been happening in our schools right now. Just again, some kind of context here, in consultation with the other groups, with the other resource groups, planning groups, and our steering committee, they, we landed on some of these different elements that you see here. So for example, as we had shared with you previously, Group A will attend Monday and Wednesday, and Group B would attend Tuesday and Thursday, so this A-B model, and also selecting Friday as the day that would offer, you know, additional planning time, collaboration, time for digital content, and, but also students would be engaging in, in learning experiences throughout, and additional cleaning, meal and materials delivery. So some of the background on that is, as we discussed and what surfaced up in those conversations, that Friday allowed us some greater amount of in-person instructional time as we looked at Mondays or potentially Wednesdays, and we know there's a number of different scenarios out there, some similar to ours, and some that have selected other days as well. But as in our discussions and where we landed in terms of all that collaboration, Friday seemed to allow us that additional time for in-person. Also too, as mentioned, planning to deliver materials, we see Friday as an opportune time for our district Learning Academy, that, our Distance Learning Academy that is going to be occurring, so we'll be able to deliver those materials as well as a week's worth of meals to our families. So again, those were important. Some, there were discussions around different models, as I mentioned, the A-B also considered were A-A, B-B. So for example, as, you know, we looked into this, one of the things that surfaced up is important to us around the A-B model is, for example, if a student was in instruction on a Tuesday in the A-A model, that student wouldn't have any additional face-to-face opportunities with the teacher until that following Monday. So looking at that, that we felt that was important, and also the opportunity for that, for the teacher to intervene quicker if there's some issues with that remote day. And then too, as we balanced it out, looking at the, sort of the natural break with Friday with four instructional days, again, leading up to Friday, we felt that that was an important aspect of what we're doing. You could, the other components here, you'll hear a little bit more about this in terms of music and fayed as we get a little further into the presentation, but I wanted to share, share that above information with you. Next slide, please. So at this point, I'm going to ask Gary Cave to unmike and share a little more in terms of our pre-K features. Gary?
Good evening, everyone. So as we dive in and look at our four-year-old programming that is really intentional around those, learning of those students that would be pre-kindergarten within our system, the first group that we're going to look at is our Early Childhood and Family Ed classes. Currently, under this model, the recommendation is that classes would run at a 50% capacity, just as the hybrid model that we're proposing, with an A and B group that would alternate days as well. Tuition for those classes would then be adjusted accordingly based on the time that they would be enrolled in those classes, and then programs offered would be based on most current guidelines, of course, and then staff would support virtual classrooms and in-person models is where we're at around those programs. As we move to voluntary pre-K and Title I classrooms, these are the free half-day, everyday classes that will also run at the 50% capacity with A and B groups that students would attend on the alternate days that Stephen mentioned, and VPK and, excuse me, VPK and Title I teachers would support that in-person and distance learning for those individual students. The last program that listed is our Four Star Express Program, keeping in mind that that is really more of a childcare-based preschool program that families pay a weekly tuition for and is open typically from that 6:30 to 6:00 timeframe within our buildings. So currently, our plan is to hopefully send out a survey to families tomorrow morning to gather their needs, and work with our building administrators to determine space needs and find out the interest in families staying with that tuition-based program. And then based on that survey feedback, we would seek additional space or adjust space based on what those families are thinking around wanting potentially five days a week of care, or make programmatic decisions for this tuition-based model based on some of that feedback.
Thank you, Gary. Next slide, please. At this point, I'm going to ask Rob Nelson, who facilitated our elementary instructional core group, to unmike and share some additional details around the hybrid model and elementary. Rob?
Absolutely. Good evening, everyone. I'll just go through it point by point and kind of emphasize a couple of things. Face-to-face relationship building and directly responding to the social, emotional need for students, I think that's on everyone's minds right now. We are, we determined that we were absolutely 100% jealous for any type of time we could give the students. Of course, everyone would prefer in-person, but the hybrid allows us to be able to do that, especially at the beginning of the year. One of the reasons why we had pockets of success and some of the things that happened last spring were because we had five months' worth of relationships established. It's critical at the beginning of an L It's critical at the beginning of an elementary year to be able to establish those routines and procedures. And let's face it, the best way to do that is in-person. So kids need to feel connected to, to their adults and trust those adults and know that someone will go to the end of their. So that, it's really important for us to be able to do that. And really, the social emotional needs of our youngest learners can be very, very tricky. They can be nuanced. And nothing replaces being able to see them in settings and have those things kind of unearthed. And then being able to respond to them in time. So we're, that's absolutely one of our non-communicables and we are absolutely jealous for that. The second part says we'll provide a more predictable structure for student learning while decreasing length of time. Steve talked a little bit about that length of contact points within a week. But really, our work at our, at our committee level or our group level really focused on how can we coordinate our efforts and leverage all staff. Teachers, our counselors, our support staff, critically, our ESPs, our custodial and food service. Our equity staff, learning and achievement staff to create this coordinated effort. It allows for staff to be able to directly teach in-person while simultaneously creating opportunities for students to demonstrate and practice and extend that learning. Through materials and projects and more in a very fluid, real-time way. There's increased opportunity for individualized and small group instruction. That sounds strange to say, but while students are in school only half the time, it also means only half the students are in school. And so it provides our teaching staff and our support staff the opportunity to restructure their day. Their lessons, their routines, and their procedures. By utilizing flipped instruction along with, like Steve said, identifying very critical essential learnings. That can and should provide us with opportunities to streamline instruction while in-person. And more quickly identify student understandings and misunderstandings and respond in time. And then finally, it allows for definitely more direct instruction for music and, for music and FIAD than we were able to get in a distance learning environment. But not only are FIAD and music, which are critical, as you know, some students, that's how they find their passions in school. They find that through being exposed to movement and through song. And, but they also learn that through our tag specialists, our talented youth specialists, by different enrichment opportunities that they have. Those are things that are critical at such a young age for them to be able to get that. Those experiences and find those passions and set them on the right pathway. So those are just some of the highlights from an elementary perspective.
Thank you, Rob. Next slide please. So again, as we organize into the three groups, Brian Chance is going to share with some of the key features from the middle school. Brian, if you would.
Yeah, thank you, Steve, and good evening, everyone. The first bullet point is really about the relationship factor. The transition to the middle school is one that brings a lot of excitement for kids. But it also brings a lot of anxiety for them as well. And with the hybrid model, students being allowed to come into the building, even if it's just for two days a week. Will give them an opportunity to build relationships with the school staff. And identify the, the routines and procedures of a new learning environment and allow them to navigate that. Much better than they would be able to in a distance learning model. The next bullet point talks about the direct teacher support to students. Having the, the teachers provide that direct instruction two days a week, followed by the, the remote learning. Will allow the students to have a better understanding of the, the content that's being taught. And then on the, the days when the students are not in session, they'll be provided some remote type of instruction. That could be a flipped classroom, could be learning packets. We also hope to utilize our ESPs to have some, some virtual help rooms for kids so that they can access that. And we can capitalize on the, the skills and talents of our, our non-licensed folks to support the learning with the kids. The, the next bullet point talks about the social and emotional learning and support through our existing advisory and team structures. We know that our kids have been out of school of, since the middle of March. And for, for middle school kids, they're going to be really, really excited to come back. And we need to not only teach them how to do school again, but how to do school in a different way. They're going to want to come back and, and, you know, hang out with their friends and, you know, eat in the cafeteria the same way. Use the restroom the same way. And we're going to have to use that advisory time to really teach them how we can do school. In a way that's going to be safe for them. We also know that our, our kids and families have experienced some negative results from the COVID-nineteen experience. As well as the, the killing of George Floyd. And we want to be able to provide space for our kids to be able to talk through and navigate those feelings. And the last bullet point is about opportunities to provide professional development. One thing that I learned very quickly during the distance learning was that there was. Some of our teaching staff and myself included that were better prepared for. That the technology and engaging in a distance learning model better than others. And with the hybrid model and being able to come back into school, it'll provide a better opportunity for us to. Administratively provide staff development and probably, more importantly, utilize some of our, our staff members who are really, really good with the technology and the distance learning. To provide support to staff that may need additional support with that.
Thank you, Brian. Next slide please. Bart Becker, would you on mic, so Bart will again share high school key features. Bart facilitated that team as well.
Thank you and good evening, everyone. So we believe at the high school level and expanding upon what both Rob and Brian shared. But this allows us to tap the, our strengths of our staff, both licensed and non-licensed, and also our greatest potential. And as the first bullet shows, we have several priority areas. Obviously, each and every student is, is, is personal and infinitely valuable. And within that work, the onboarding of our ninth graders, we all know the transition from level to level, from elementary to middle and middle to high school. Those are big moves. The high school level, it's unique because this, this, this is so much to say, this is when game time really begins. The credits count. Graduation readiness counts. The, the, the clock is ticking towards that finish line and anyone who's, who's a parent and has had students go through, those four years go fast. So the hybrid model allows us our greatest strength, which is that face-to-face, that in-person experience. To support the transition, to build up this, the, the person within each student as we move to educate them throughout. Number one. Two, we have the resources to address the learning gaps from the spring. We have a number, and that's a big number of, across the three comprehensive high schools and the ALC due to the number of our, our enrollment. We have a lot of no grades on there and we have a lot of credits that have yet to be fully secured. And this will allow us to innovate over the course of August, which I know each of the high schools and the ALC are doing. To create with the resources that we have, opportunities to address those learning gaps. And then provide the supports for students to make up those no grades from the spring into earn credits, which will contribute towards their graduation readiness. It allows us to identify where those gaps exist, not only from our incoming ninth graders, but from our returning students. We all know that in the spring, there were skills and there was content that was not learned due to the radical shift of delivery as a result of the shutdown. So this will allow us to capitalize on that. Three, to build relationships with their incoming ninth graders and to re-establish the relationships with our, with our returning students. It's, it's an old adage, but it's true. Students don't know or don't, oh, I'm forgetting now. They don't remember what you, what you taught them so much, but they remember exactly how you feel. That is as important as it has ever been now. After the length of time, and I forget what I shared back in July, what is it, five and a half months, more than five and a half months since our students. Our kids have been in classrooms in a structured school setting. And we're going to capture that opportunity the moment they return. The hybrid model also allows us to identify and intervene more readily to ensure graduation readiness. We saw this loud and clear as we were collaborating and utilizing every resource to our avail across all, all the three comprehensive high schools and the ALC. To identify, to intervene, and to support our students proceed through graduation readiness in an era of sudden distance learning. Now we have the opportunity in-person to capture those, to see eye to eye and to, into structure and provide the supports. With the collaboration from our families at home, utilizing both licensed and non-licensed staff to interrupt any patterns. And encourage our students and support them on the way towards graduation readiness. And lastly, this model, again, it is, it is, it taps our strengths and our greatest potential. An incredible amount of learning was done by our collective staff last spring. It wasn't learning we had planned for, however, that's the experience we were given and everyone did their very best with it. And now we have a chance to apply those learnings. And so this is going to empower our staff to use what is their expertise. And this is something that's important. Every single building has a staff. And for those of us, whether it's in schools or in the private sector, you've all worked on teams, you've all worked amongst large staffs. Or you have customers, every, there's, there's groups, there's personalities, there's, there's cultures. This allows us to peel those away and realize that within each of our buildings, within each of our staffs, there lies excellence. And there's a commitment to our students and a love to see our students succeed and, and stand side by side with them. This will allow us to capture that expertise and apply it to our greatest strength, which is our, our, the delivery of the in-person instruction. While also applying our learned knowledge and our new skills to, to deliver enhanced, student-centered, racially and culturally responsive instructional learning experiences. Where students can see themselves in the curriculum, in the learning experiences, and identify why this is relevant to me. And I'm going to give more to my learning because of what my teacher has offered me. And it's off we go. So for all these reasons, these are all aspects of the hybrid model at the high school level and we're excited to start.
Thank you, Bart. Next slide please. So as I mentioned earlier at the, at the beginning, one of the elements that each of the groups paid particular attention to was special education. But in addition to Kate Emmett, who I'm going to ask to on mic and share some of these key, key features that's been working closely with her team. To make sure that the work is syncing up with, with all the groups. Kate?
Yes. And as someone who got to spend some time in our extended school year sites this summer. I can absolutely say with certainty that our teachers love getting their hands on kids. And I, and I mean that in a good way, that it's, that they loved having students in front of them. So when Rob Nelson said they are anxious for that, so I don't remember the exact word. I can say that it was a great experience for both teachers and students this summer. So yes, we did have the opportunity to look at hybrid and are excited about getting the opportunity to be in front of students. And recognize that collaboration between our grade level and content areas and our teachers, special education teachers should be prioritized and clearly planned. We need to keep the kids on target and on going along with their grade level standards. Case managers will need to hold IEP meetings to determine services for each child on their case load if this hasn't occurred yet. So it's not, I don't want, if there's a listening public out there and there are case managers out there saying, what, wait, what? No, if you have not done this already, because as you know, in March through the end of June or through June, we did give this, when you had an IP, please discuss this. And develop a, a distance learning plan in every IEP. So at a time when we could not have conceived of a pandemic or closing down schools, we did not have a distance learning plan. We can now not only conceive it, we're living it. And that, those will be included in every IEP going forward. So students who receive services in the site-based programs, those are connect skills and strategies. They're going to participate in their general ed classrooms through digital means whenever possible. And the reason there were, may not be as much push-in as we all know is we don't take one germ pool and kind of co-mingle with another. But we still want to maintain those relationships and learning experiences. And of course, we will provide our resource services. And I'm, I'm not sure if we're talking by meant resource or itinerant services. But all of our itinerant speech and OT and PT and all of the other stellar itinerant services will continue to be provided, albeit in a different. The service provider will push into general ed classrooms whenever possible. Again, depending on what we find out and depending when they can. They will absolutely do that to the greatest extent possible. Maybe it's through digital means. And like learning and achievement, we'll discuss the flip model of instruction to support flexible movement between models is something that we're committed to as a system. And student services and special ed are part of the system. We're all doing that. And then focus on essential learnings for each unit with the idea that we may need to switch learning models during the year. I think my new, my new, not favorite word, because that would be overstating. But pivot is certainly something that has new meaning for me during this time. The important part is that every student receiving special education services on an IP, their needs need to be met. Their learning goals and, and objectives need to be taught to. And we are very. Thrilled, thrilled. We are anxious to get started, along with the rest of the district.
Thank you, Kate. Next slide please. And as, again, as I had mentioned, English learners are particular, their experiences in our distance learning from the spring. We have Kirsten here to speak to some of the, the thinking and the key features around our hybrid model for our English learners. Kirsten?
Thank you, Steve, and good evening Chair O'Stoppy and School Board members. I would like to just begin by telling everyone I'm having a little bit of a hard time with my connection. So if all of a sudden you can't hear me, if somebody could just on mic and let me know, I'd appreciate that. So as many of my colleagues have already mentioned, and talking through the elementary and middle, high school and considerations for special education programming. There are many things that overlap in regards to EL programming as well. As Kate mentioned, our main focus will be on increasing collaboration between EL and content area teachers this year. And that's for a number of reasons. There's actually specific language in the Minnesota Department of Education guidance around that being a requirement to be prioritized and planned in order to support students. Throughout the year and as we're shifting between, potentially shifting between different models of instructional programming. So what that's going to look like within EL will be more of a focus on co-teaching and collaboration and services located within the grade level or content area classroom. Will really be minimizing the amount of time that a student could be working with an EL teacher in a separate instructional space. Because especially in the hybrid model, we have to be very careful and very attentive to the ways that students are interacting between groups. And also we're trying to minimize those interactions between teachers and multiple different classrooms as well. For that reason, we're also needing to think very intentionally and strategically about how we are grouping students for instruction. And this might look significantly different depending on the school and what they've been doing based on the number of students that they are working with. Who receive EL program services and the number of teachers who support those services. But because we have to work on that interaction between groups and, and pay attention to that. And knowing that we have to be set up to be able to move fluidly between those three different scenarios. We are going to need to group students into one or two sections per grade or course. To allow us to continue to provide that support through EL programming, which like special education programming, needs to be continued and supported throughout all the scenarios this year. There are lots of different instructional components that we'll focus on during that co-teaching and collaboration. But one thing that's different that hasn't been mentioned yet is that we'll also be using some of that in-person time to do some pre-teaching of content, language. And as well, the technology tools that students will need to use for their upcoming distance learning days. So that they're able to engage with that more effectively. We're also looking at how we can potentially bring students in for more in-person instruction. And that was something that all of our elementary, middle, and high school groups considered and supported. And so we're thinking about those different levels of language proficiency, particularly the students who are newer to learning English. How we might be able to bring them into our schools for more in-person instruction. We know that that would be beneficial from our experiences in the spring and also the. feedback that we received from our students and families surveys. So we're working on that, but that's going to take a lot of communication and collaboration with lots of different stakeholders, including our families, because that's something we'd want them to opt into as well. We have to maintain those ratios of capacities at our schools and on our buses and things like that. But that's something that we're working on right now to determine what we might be able to do there. And then lastly, focusing on more effective multilingual communication and two-way communication, I would say, not just coming from the district, but ways that our families can engage with us as well. And that's something that we've known that we need to continue to work on, but was highlighted for us as well in the survey work that we did over the past few months. So we have identified some of our current tools that we can provide more training around, but we're also exploring some additional options that we could integrate in order to enhance our ability to meet these needs and communicate more effectively with our students and families around all this important information.
Thank you, Kirsten. Next slide, please. So I'm not going to spend much time on it, but I do want to remind you that all this, and we need to be prepared for in-person and also distance learning. And so we shared with you on the 21st about the in-person models and the distance learning, but I just wanted to kind of re-ground you and just let you know that that's still a part of the work that will need to happen if we do need to pivot or change into those different models. Next slide, please. You can, you can move on. Again, the distance learning piece as a highlight was informed, is informed by the feedback that we received, and, and just know that as we're, we're going to be unpacking the hybrid, we'll be unpacking the distance learning with, with all of our schools. In closing, I do want to say this, I hope you heard this evening the passion and the commitment from the team members, and I do want to thank them for their work and their volunteering and, and their support. We know that a lot of work has gone into this, as I had mentioned, number of volunteers and everybody working at it, but we do know facing us is a lot of work as well. And so, and not to sugarcoat it, a tremendous amount of work over the next few weeks. So at this point, I'm going to turn this back over to Anthony, who's going to share some details around Distance Learning Academy. Anthony?
Good evening, School Board and colleagues on, on this meeting tonight. I have the opportunity to kind of give some background and some grounding around the Distance Learning Academy. The Distance Learning Academy is come to fruition after the discussions with the Instructional Fall Planning Group. And as Corey mentioned, the guidance that came out in June is that school districts have to also provide a distance learning option for any family or student who does not want to return to any form of in-person instruction. So after the Instructional Fall Planning Work Group came together with feedback from teachers and our various bargaining groups and our administrators, looking at the different models, it was recommended at that time that we look at building a centralized distance learning academy or a distance learning program to support this option for families. The rationale behind this was to look at how we can maximize and pool our resources together to offer a comprehensive quality experience for students, as opposed to every single one of our school sites offering independent distance learning options, and also putting teachers in a position to potentially teach multiple models simultaneously. So that is the background behind what came together to create a centralized distance learning academy and the background of the creation with the, the guidance from MDE saying that we need to provide this option for families. Right? Prior to the School Board meeting tonight, we are at 1,465 students registered, K through 12. Breaking that down a little bit, we have 680 elementary students, 306 middle school students, and 470 high school students. Putting that in perspective at the elementary level, that's about three sections at each grade level at this time. And registration continues for currently enrolled students until August 9th. As we think about this Distance Learning Academy, we're really building a school from the ground up. So if we think about this process and how we're structuring courses and determining staffing and what secondary courses will be offered, it is really contingent and based around student registrations into this program for us to understand what the needs are and how we build some of those pieces out. That is part of the reason we're asking for a year-long commitment. We are building a process in that will allow students to return to their physical sites at the beginning of trimester two and three, depending on available resources. So if we think about this during the school year, it'd be like an in-district transfer from one school to the next, and we want to make sure that we have teaching staff and we have the safe spaces and protocols in place for students to actually return back into those physical settings. Also, as we think about stability with our resources, allowing students to move in and out at different periods of time may cause vast shifts in our staffing, requiring us to move staff across the district in order to ensure that there's resources in place. So trying to create an experience that has continuity for students and they can keep consistent teachers, this is part of the reason for having a, a process and a year-long commitment. We don't want to end up in an experience where we have several students returning to a school, and now a third grade teacher that had a group of students is going to have to move into fourth grade to meet the needs of that school and staff that section, which when we think about building relationships that we talked about a lot tonight within these programs is going to be, you know, essential as we're engaging students. Classes will be taught by licensed teaching staff. So as we staff this, we're prioritizing that 22% that Corey mentioned earlier. So we have staff that have identified that they're in a high-risk category and may not be able to return to in-person work. We're going to utilize and capitalize on those staff to provide an instruct, meaningful instructional experience and an opportunity for them to continue their work. Beyond that, looking at the staffing needs, we'll then go beyond and see what additional staff, licensed staff, we need to teach particular courses, depending on, you know, a specific licensure area at the secondary level. We're going to have to look at several different potential staffing opportunities as we continue to navigate and move forward. It could mean that we have scenarios where some secondary teachers might be teaching part-time in the Distance Learning Academy and part-time face-to-face within the hybrid model, depending on the courses and the sections and the registration. Instruction will be a blend of live sessions, live lessons, small group sessions, pre-recorded videos, and independent work. One of the things that I want to stress is based on the feedback and all the data that we collected from our spring distance learning experience, we learned a lot about what worked well and what didn't work well. So our experience as we look at the Distance Learning Academy is very different than the experience that we were looking at in the spring. And I would say that is very much so for the Distance Learning Program, that if we shifted the whole districts into distance learning, it's going to look very different than what it did in the spring. And as I talk about some of these instructional components, these instructional components are directly out of the distance learning planning that came from that instructional work group for the fall planning. Student services will continue to be provided, so special education, ELL services, students on 504 plans, and gifted and talented. Again, we are going to be looking at all the students that have registered into this program to identify what are the special ed needs, what are the EL needs, and what are the existing gifted and talent needs in order to provide appropriate staffing to meet those programmatic needs with, within our program. Elementary curriculum will mirror the same curriculum that is being used in the physical learning environment. So we don't have a specialized curriculum because it's a Distance Learning Academy. We will continue to be using the same teachers and the same curriculum at our elementary level that our physical elementary schools are utilizing. It'll just be delivered in a remote environment. Our secondary schools will focus on offering core subject areas and courses for graduation requirements first. Secondary electives will continue to be offered, but they, they may be limited based on enrollment. So if we think about this as building a new school, we're going to poll all the six through 12 students that are registered. We are going to look at their course registrations that they currently have existing within their schools, and then we're going to run tally marks, just like all our high schools and middle schools do when students register for courses in the fall. And depending on how many students are registered for a particular level, for particular courses, will determine whether we have an ability to offer that course or not within the Distance Learning Academy. We've had several questions around extracurricular activities as well, so I want to highlight, students enrolled in the Distance Learning Academy are dual-enrolled. So they are enrolled in their homeschool and they are enrolled in this academy for providing instructional services. So extracurricular activities, athletics, all of those components that are offered at their physical homeschool site, students still qualify to participate and engage in those. And speaking of extracurricular activities, I'm going to hand it off to Corey on State High School League update.
Thank you. And I'm going to hand it over to Michael Leahan, who was able to put together some new information we just learned this afternoon from the State High School League. So, Michael?
Absolutely. Good evening, everybody. As Corey alluded to, there's some new information that we wanted to take some time to share with each of you tonight. Obviously, we know the importance of extracurricular activities for our scholar athletes and what that does to our school community. Today, the Minnesota State High School League, they met and they used the following principles to discern to what extent we're going to return to participation. They certainly prioritize the health and safety of each scholar athlete to its greatest potential. They aligned the return to participation with the options, the MDE and MDH safety measures, and prescribed learning models that have been set forth. Demonstrate equity and fairness and preparation for programming and their options, and then the acknowledgement of financial implications while applying Minnesota State High School League guidelines consistently. As you see on the screen, fall sports that are going to be starting August 17th are cross-country swimming, tennis, and soccer with modifications. The Minnesota State High School League is adding extra seasons between winter and spring that will include volleyball and football. The winter and spring sports will also be modified. Specifics are yet to be determined, but the plan is to be limited overlap so scholar athletes can participate in each season. Primary seasons would be winter ends March 15th, fall goes from March 15th until May 15th, and spring goes May 15th to July 15th. And again, this is not yet set in stone. At this time, I'd like to give it to Ron to go over some of our operational aspects.
Thank you, Michael, and good evening, Chair O'Staphie, Superintendent McIntyre, and Board Members. I want to start our operational conversation with just reminding our Board Members that we have broken down our operations plan into six different categories, including health and safety and risk management, nutrition services, facilities and custodial services, transportation, childcare, and technology. While we have created comprehensive operation plans for all three of the scenarios, I'm going to focus my attention on the hybrid model this evening, as that's the recommendation to start the year. So I will start out with our health and safety and risk management area, because this part of the plan really impacts all of the other areas. A key, a few key elements to the hybrid model is first, all of our staff in kindergarten, all of our staff as well as our kindergarten and older students will be required to wear face masks. This is part of the governor's mandate. The district has already purchased and is planning to provide two cloth masks for every staff and every student. We also believe, as Corey mentioned earlier, that based on info from the state that we just received today about the process, that each staff and student will also receive a mask from the state, and then will also be given some disposable masks. There is some exceptions to the face mask requirement as determined by the Department of Health, and we will certainly accommodate those as well for both students and staff. We're also planning to provide other PPE items as needed by our staff based on their particular role, and we are stocking up inventory for those items right now as well. All of our staff, students, and visitors will be required to go through a verbal health screening before they enter our buildings or as they enter our buildings. Additionally, parents will be asked to do a health screening, including a temperature check, at home before they send their child to school each day. We will place signage in each of our buildings to remind both students and staff of the symptoms of COVID-19, as well as to guide social distance behavior throughout the building. Visitors and volunteers will be restricted to try to really limit the number of outside individuals that come into our buildings. We will also be installing clear barriers, either Plexiglas or some similar product, at the first point of contact space in each of our buildings. And finally, training will be required of all of our staff related to COVID awareness, as well as any cleaning chemical usage that they may need to utilize in their classroom or throughout the building. These safety items, as well as many other operational details of how we will effectively operate our schools safely during this pandemic, will be documented in a COVID site safety plan that each building leadership team will create. Steve mentioned it a little bit earlier. This plan will be created in collaboration with and certainly support from our operations team. And then another key point is that we will also have a district-wide COVID response team, and they will be responsible to deal with any potential or confirmed positive case of COVID from either a staff member or a student or visitor in our schools. This team will work closely with each building leadership, with our district leadership, with the Department of Health, with staff and families, to really have a clear and consistent process to respond in the safest way possible to any exposures that may occur. Anthony, next slide. So now as we shift to nutrition service, I want to highlight just a few of the features to our hybrid model. First of all, meals will be served in both cafeterias as well as other open common spaces such as gymnasiums to ensure social distancing. Because of cleaning and student supervision concerns, we are not going to serve meals in classrooms. Each school, in collaboration with the nutrition service and the facilities and custodial team, will need to create a plan of where the meals will be served in addition to the cafeteria, and that will be included in that COVID site safety plan that I mentioned earlier. We will also seek to limit use of high-touch areas such as keypads at the cashier area. One potential way to do this, as an example, may be to have our teachers at the elementary level in particular, fill out rosters each day on which students ate lunch, and then submit that information to our nutrition service staff. Our nutrition service staff will be serving all of our non-packaged items rather than having a self-service model like we have in the past. And per the Department of Health guidelines, our nutrition service staff will be required to follow the same guidance as bars and restaurants, and I know we talked about that on the 21st. This was especially important before that face covering mandate came from the governor, as at that time, our food service workers would be the only ones that were required at that point to wear face masks. Now, obviously, all of our employees are. We will be serving meals to, in this model, in our hybrid model, will be serving meals to our students in school, and will also be serving meals curbside for all of those students that are in distance learning, whether through that Distance Learning Academy that Anthony talked about, or if they're in the off day of the A and B model. We will also be planning to deliver a week's worth of meals on Friday for those families that cannot present themselves to a site that is offering the curbside meals. And then finally, the last piece I want to touch on is that we are planning to rotate our menu with a wide variety of meals. And what's a little bit unique as we enter into the fall that we didn't necessarily have as we were in distance learning last spring, is that we're going to be offering both cold and hot options, both in the, in the school buildings when we have students in the schools, but also for our curbside and our delivery meals, where students will be able to heat the meals at home and to be able to have a hot meal. Next slide, Anthony? So as we shift to our facilities and custodial, there are just three main areas that I really want to highlight. The first is our cleaning and disinfecting. So our custodial staff will be working diligently to clean and to disinfect those high-touch areas throughout the schools in addition to their regular job duties. However, cleanliness and sanitation has to be a shared responsibility. And so our custodial staff will also make safe sanitizing products available to our teachers and our staff throughout the building to use. and our staff throughout the building to use throughout the day in the classroom and other parts of the building. We will also have a COVID response team established so that if there is an exposure in a particular area of a school, this team can go in and do that deep cleaning, whether it's a confirmed case or a suspected exposure in that space. The second area that I'll touch on is facility modification. This really has to do with making alterations to areas to ensure social distancing and other health and safety items are followed. Some examples of this would be moving desks and furnitures around in the classrooms or out of classrooms, creating some additional cafeteria spaces like I talked about earlier, installing signage and clear barriers throughout the school, including in our, in our cafeterias. Our facility staff will work in concert with the building leadership team to ensure that that COVID site safety plan that I talked about is implemented. And then the third area has to do with our mechanical systems and particularly the airflow in the buildings. We will be working closely with our HVAC manufacturers and the Department of Health to ensure that our indoor air quality complies with the recommendations from the Department of Health. Next slide, Anthony. Next area is transportation. Our transportation team has developed a plan to support the A/B hybrid model. This requires no more than 50% occupancy on each route, which is approximately 34 students on a large bus. So to help us understand how to comply with this capacity requirement, we have sent a questionnaire out to all of our senior high families and asked them to give us some feedback to determine whether or not they will be utilizing transportation services this year. This information will help us to be more efficient, but also be more flexible with some of those other transportation needs that might come up as we move forward. Also, our transportation team has been intricately involved with determining what students are assigned to the A day or the B day to ensure balance not just in each school building, but also on the buses. And also to try to ensure that siblings that are attending different schools are assigned on that same day. Some of the strategies to promote social distancing and health and safety related to transportation includes considering staggered arrival and dismissal times to eliminate those large congregations, to discontinue activities like field trips that bring large groups together, and then also to work closely with our transportation vendors to ensure proper cleaning protocols are in place and are followed. So now I want to turn it over to Carrie Cave, and she's going to walk us through some of the key features of the childcare plan. Carrie?
Good evening again. As I think about childcare for the hybrid model, here's some of the things that we are planning currently, as well as the four-star survey that we mentioned earlier when we were talking about pre-K learning. We're going to be sending a survey out to families tomorrow morning as well to gather their needs, and then again, work with building administration to determine space needs. Via the executive order and guides priority will be given and is free to essential tier-one workers during the core school day. So keeping in mind that tier-one includes healthcare and public health, law enforcement, public safety and first responders, those that work in food and agriculture within the judicial branch, National Guard members that are activated under the executive order, educators and school staff providing in-person instruction or caring for children of critical workers, and then childcare and school-age care providers are all listed as tier-one, and there's some deeper lists that dive pretty deep into just different job titles around those tier-one services as well. With that Kid Stop and Four Star, our hope is to be available to our whole community. The goal is to have registration out to all by no later than August 14th. We want to kind of look at that survey data and then think through space before we would put a registration process out to families. Fees will likely mirror the typical before and after-school rates and non-school day rates that were scheduled to be for the 2021 school year. And then programming will be made available for before and after-school on in-person instruction days to students, as well as full day for students on their distance learning days. And then, as I shared last time when we presented to the board, we would be looking at scholarships and potentially other financial assistance to help support families in covering the costs of the program.
Thank you, Carrie, and now I'm going to turn it over to Anthony, and he's just going to briefly go through some of the technology components to our plan.
Good evening again, and all of this will probably look very similar to what was shared on the 21st as well. And just to ground the key thinking around our operations around technology and support for technology is really focused on designing a plan that allows our organization to be nimble and agile in order to move between models without a significant transition process. So really, from an instructional standpoint, you know, we're ensuring that our staff that need to have mobile technologies will continue to have mobile technologies as they may be working in and out of models and remotely potentially as well, and for our students to have a one-to-one device ratio. So every student K through 12 will be assigned a device this year. This is to meet two criterias. One, the CDC, MDH, and MDE guidance around the sharing of technology and manipulatives to limit how much students are sharing of those resources, as well as to allow that mobility and flexibility between models. And in particular, as we talk about the hybrid model, to ensure that our students can engage with remote learning on the days that they are not in person. We will continue to provide and support internet resources for families in each of our models as necessary. As you may know, in the spring, we purchased and have provided many hotspots to families. We have also engaged and explored opportunities with our cities and our county and other business partnerships to look at solutions for helping support our families with internet access needs as well. We will continue to work on those different solutions for families depending on what approach may be best for internet access needs. And with that, I will hand it off to Laurel to engage with resources.
Thank you, Anthony. The Resources Work Group worked in collaboration with labor leaders and district administration, and tonight I'd like to share the highlights of those efforts. Next slide, thank you. The first is the development of a standard fund request template that team facilitators can use as they request funds via programs such as CARES, LTFM, and other funding resources. This template allows us a standardized method of capturing expenses related to COVID-19. The expectation for our leaders is that there is a net zero impact to the general fund budget. As you heard earlier tonight, we created an employee survey specifically focused on district staffing. The survey was intended and designed with targeted questions so we can better understand our employees' thoughts and concerns surrounding returning to work in the different learning models. The data from the survey is beneficial to assist us with staffing considerations and the needs of staffing assignments for the upcoming school year. As a result of the survey, Human Resources has reached out to over 500 employees to get additional information and documentation regarding possible requests for workplace accommodations. We have asked for that information to be returned to us by August 7th so that we're ready to go once we know the staffing needs for the Distance Learning Academy. We'll be working with our labor leaders, our sites, learning and achievement, and DLTL once that staffing information is ready to go. We've also collaborated with labor management and site leaders to identify 10 key work expectations categories for all staff. This was done in an effort to develop consistent work expectations for employee groups and to maximize flexibility across job titles. Our team is working to develop a remote work tool which indicates which positions can work remotely and what the basic duties are that will be performed while working remotely. We're developing a template remote work letter so supervisors have information to send to any staff member who will be working remotely, which outlines specific work that needs to be done and resources. Develop a remote working log, so when staff are working remotely, there's a daily tracking. And then finally, we've been working with our labor leaders to develop work agreements, labor agreements that define terms and conditions that may need to change from the typical collective bargaining agreement language. And the 10 key areas for that work include work assignments, work hours, pay, furlough, leave provisions, emergency close language, safety, collaboration time, substitute teaching, and privacy as it relates to staff records and lessons. We recognize the potential need to navigate between different learning environments throughout the school year, so we collaborated with our labor management and site leaders on the concept of flexibility within bargaining units. For example, you know, we're going to be limiting the number of volunteers that come to each site. So we have a volunteer coordinator who's an ESP at each site that isn't going to be focused on getting staff or outside volunteers to come in to the site. So what we hope to be able to do is take that ESP and repurpose them so that they can maximize their use and support of students within the school environment. So for example, they might not be doing their volunteer coordinator work, but maybe they'll be assigned to supervise in the secondary lunchroom area. Or they could be assigned to serve as a Kid Stop ESP as long as they're staying within the same bargaining unit work and classification. Our labor leaders have been very agreeable to flexibility and keeping our staff employed to maximize our support for students. Another focus is on cross-training employees so that staff can support one another and our system when absences occur, which we know will happen. We've been developing a process for employees with bachelor's degrees to get a short call sub-license. Information was sent out to Management Exchange today, and it will be sent out to employees tomorrow where volunteers can get their short call sub-license, and then we can utilize them as a sub when we need a substitute for a teaching position in our classrooms. And finally, we're working on increasing our substitute pool through the use of intentional strategies, which include posting sponsored ads on Facebook. And then also, we've posted information about subpositions on Indeed, LinkedIn, Facebook, and Facebook Jobs. And finally, the recruitment manager, Dante Williams, will reach out to community networks to communicate the ability for people to become substitute teachers as well. And now I'll turn it over to Barb Olson, who will share some information regarding the work of the Communications and Stakeholder Engagement Work Group.
Thank you, and you can advance. Board members, you heard about the planning work of the communications team at the last board meeting. So for tonight, I'll focus on the following key points. First, following board action tonight on the superintendent's recommendation, tomorrow we'll launch an expanded version of the Ready to Restart section of the district website. The website will be the most comprehensive resource for information about the start of school this fall. It will have information about the three models, the Distance Learning Academy, the state's Safe Learning Plan, links to other resources such as the Fall Planning Survey, and details in 17 areas of our own plan. Later this week, we'll be adding an FAQ page with answers to the most common questions we're hearing. I strongly urge you to point people to the website whenever you hear questions. It will have the greatest amount of information and the most current information available at any time. As you know, after the governor's announcement on July 30th, we called and emailed all staff and families with an overview of all three instructional models and the Distance Learning Academy, including a brochure that presents the information in a visual way. The next day, we called and emailed staff and families again to announce the superintendent's recommendation to return in the hybrid model. And yesterday morning, a mailing went out by first-class mail to all families with the intent of ensuring equitable access to information for those who may not have emails or phone numbers in our student information system. We'll continue to communicate with staff and families primarily by phone and email as more information becomes available. You know that we always use multiple ways to reach staff, families, and community members, including the communication channels listed on this slide. And finally, we translate most district-level communications into the four main languages whenever possible and provide those translated versions as soon as they can be turned around. Superintendent McIntyre?
All right, thank you, Barb, and thank you to our entire team for the depth of presentation tonight. And as you all have heard, there's even more depth available being provided the next few days on our, on our website for those really detailed questions that we know everyone is receiving. Board members, as I have determined my recommendation to you, there's just a few key elements that I've taken into account I would like you to consider. This Fall 2020 School opening team and the process we went through the last few weeks, almost two months now, was developed and implemented with, with your support. You provided valuable feedback to us, and you've been involved and informed at each step of the way through the process. I believe the administration has followed through with that process to develop and recommend our plan. This process involved a large number of our staff, as you've heard me say a number of times, representing all of our employee groups, and they were all represented in our four work teams, our four work groups as well. You've seen now a couple of times the tremendous amount of work that's been accomplished and still work to do, but the amount of effort and work that has done by those involved that have brought just exceptional expertise, invested large amounts of time with a real broad range of perspectives. They, this team, these teams have worked very hard to get a plan for all three scenarios that have been brought forward for us to be able to utilize should we need them. We also, in my recommendation, really give consideration and serious thought to the feedback that we do have from our families and staff and the input they were able to give us, and really carefully considered their preferences and how we should start the year. The recommendation also complies with Governor Walz's executive order, which is clear that it states that Minnesota Public Schools must adhere to those parameters determined, determined by MDH and MDE in implementing or shifting between the models proposed. So regardless of what model we start in, as it's required for all districts, we've created a distance learning option, and that Distance Learning Academy is available for all families who choose not to attend in person, either due to medical risks or any other safety concerns. And again, I just want to reiterate, families are not required to provide any documentation for that. It may be helpful to note too, as I mentioned earlier, that a large number of school districts across Santa Fe County and really across the metro will be starting in a hybrid model. There, at this point, are no districts that are projected to be able to start fully in person. I just want to kind of repeat myself again that this recommendation is the base learning plan to start the year. We are very aware of the fact that we, there's still uncertainty about the virus and its activity moving forward, and we will continue to monitor the impact of that. This model provides frameworks for our district to make decisions about needing to move in and out of those different scenarios if necessary. So as you contemplate your decision, I want to stress how our team's been working on this plan really since early June, utilizing information we learned back to March. And I believe we should follow the thoroughly vetted decisions made by our state and our local planning teams and the implementation of that state plan as it's reflected in the recommendation. However, I can only recommend it is really your decision to make and mine to implement. So I just want to stress the importance of receiving a decision. In order to take the critical action, we need to move forward. Every day, every hour is, is just at a premium right now that we're into August, and that time is just of the essence. Changing course at any point moving forward will really impact our ability to be ready to start the year, and having a clear direction provides families the opportunity to make decisions and plans. It provides our district the most time possible to finalize and operationalize the plan and all the logistics that you heard about tonight that need to be completed to start the year, not only on time, but successfully. So I want to, one more time, just recognize how complicated and complex this is as we start off the evening. There's no easy to answers here. It's very hard to find a solution that everybody can agree on, and there's such a wide range of perspectives and beliefs on this. It's very challenging for you as board members and for all of us trying to make really hard decisions in the best interest of our students. But regardless of the outcome of the board's decision tonight, I do want to ask our communities to join us and do, for everyone to do their part to ensure school starts on time and in the way we want it to by doing everything we each individually can do to impact that case rate by wearing masks, all our social distance guidelines. If we do our part, our students have a better chance to experience the best learning model and environments we want them to have and what we want to give them. And again, moving forward, we'll continually closely monitor our bi-weekly case rate data. We will continue to monitor and evaluate the capacity we have to identify the models we can be successful in. And then we're cared to find ways to get information from our families and partner with our staff and union leaders moving forward should the evidence suggest we need to make a change. So in the end, my recommendation is, with all that in mind, that we start the year with the hybrid model for all pre-K students on September. Thank you very much for your attention tonight. Chair Ostaffy, I'll turn it back to you.
Thank you very much, Superintendent McIntyre and Cabinet and Staff for that very thorough presentation. With that, as Superintendent McIntyre had stated, we need to approve as the board of which way to go forward, and his recommendation is to start in the hybrid plan. Is there a motion to approve the recommendation for the instructional hybrid model for the beginning of the 2020-2021 school year?
So moved Director Simons.
There is a motion. Is there a second? I will second that motion. For discussion, I'll call on each board member. We'll start with Director Simons.
Yes, thank you so much for that presentation. It's really quite convincing and compelling across all of the leaders who put the time and effort in, very thoroughly explained why this is in the best interest of our students. It's aligned with state guidance. It's consistent with what our parents have preferred and have asked us. And as Superintendent McIntyre pointed out, this is, you know, every single parent, family, staff member will have different needs, will have different perspectives. But I think that the overwhelming evidence and information tonight that was presented is very clear that this is in the best interest of our students, and again, consistent with what our families have asked for. So from my standpoint, highly supportive of this recommendation. We know that according to the state guidelines and as pointed out, that should we need to move into different models, we will be prepared to do so. The only feedback I have would be that we'd really like to see, I'd like to see, and I think our board will need ongoing monitoring reports like we've discussed in our strategic plans. So how do we ensure that we're delivering and that we're seeing success with the model? As we move closer to the start of school, I think it's going to be really important that we've got good indicators that we're fully ready and all of the operational details and milestones are completed, which I have full confidence will occur. But I also want to articulate that should there be some type of new information or some type of impediment to be able to start the year on time, I would want to understand that and be supportive of flexibility that might be needed to ensure we have the most success on this hybrid plan out of the gates. Those are my initial comments. I might have more comments if you come back around based on input from other board members.
Okay, thank you very much, Director Simons. Next, the Director Dawson Walton.
Okay, you know, this is a real, I listened to some of the other school districts' discussion around hybrid model and the distance learning, you know, model, and it's, I mean, to say it's complex is an understatement. And we've received a lot of feedback, and I think that, you know, because it's changing so rapidly, I even think the feedback we had in late June and early July is different from probably the feedback we would receive right now. We know that the numbers are increasing with positive COVID tests coming back in the , in the light, you know, by two weeks to a month. So a lot of the information we're getting, and I know that they're, you know, in the works with the MDE, MDH, the county, the school districts to kind of get the cadence of reporting that information. I think communication is absolutely critical. So for example, you know, Anthony, what you said today, I think you did a great job at, you know, kind of explaining everything, but I do think there is a lack of communication. And if I understand this right, with the Distance Learning Academy, I have received a lot of feedback from not only, you know, families but teachers and just the, you know, is it a full year commitment? Or, as you indicated today, that, you know, at certain points, dependent on our staffing, I've tried two and three families, Ken and that's the over circumstance change regardless. And so I think those are the things that people are rearing for is some, some, there's some of those real details. And the other thing I'd say on the technology piece, I'm really curious about the access to internet and not even just internet, strong internet access. And what are the opportunities to partner with, whether that's applying for grants with maybe outside organizations or, you know, just trying to problem solve this because it's an increasing problem? I mean, if you look at what's happening as a result of COVID with rents and, you know, the, that come in a couple of weeks, people will have to start paying their backgrounds, and there could be an increased amount of eviction, meaning that people will be more impacted by the multiple pandemic and highly mobile. What, you know, what's in place for our families that, that, that not only that may be experiencing being highly mobile, but then not having the access to the internet? And, you know, how can we, what are we doing to be proactive to?
Director Dawson Walton?
Yeah.
I'm sorry to interrupt you. I'm having troubles hearing you. Is your mic down on your headphones, or are you speaking into your?
Oh. Thank you.
It's because this is up. You know, earlier I saw Tanya had hers up like this, so then I put mine off. I forgot it was up, I'm sorry. You can hear me now, right?
Better.
Okay, better, okay. So I, that's really my first comment slash question. Unless you didn't hear me at all.
Director Dawson Walton, I think that Anthony might have missed a significant portion of your question because it appeared that he dropped off the call.
No, I got the question around process and what we're doing around identifying internet needs and supports for families. So the first thing that I'll talk about is, you know, we have the existing families that we identified last year through a process where we engaged all of our teachers as they were engaging families. So we, you know, have those, those families from last year that we have identified and will be working to reach out with those families again this coming school year to see if the needs continue to persist. We provided 350 mobile hotspots last year, two families in need, as well as worked with the options that existed with Comcast and CenturyLink for essential internet as well to get some homes connected. Now, some of those programs have definitely changed and will be again working with families who may be in a different situation this year. In terms of looking at partnerships and grants, we have been engaged in conversations with Brooklyn Bridge Alliance, the city of Brooklyn Park, the city of Brooklyn Center, as well as Hennepin County, who all also have CARES dollars where they're dedicating some allocations in at least early conversations towards school districts around how we can service and continue to provide internet access needs for families. And we have been made aware of some additional potential grants that exist out there. So we're looking at multiple strategies around this, and part of our process is identifying needs as we did in the spring. So where we, you know, potentially identify large apartment complexes with a concentration of students, we might look at trying to utilize a strategy with that particular apartment complex and other services to provide a different level of access rather than just providing hotspots to every student within that apartment complex. So it's, it's a multi-pronged approach to look at as many resources as we are aware to engage as we go through this and work with families that identify the needs based on what we identified in the spring, as well as we know there's going to be new needs that will, will come this fall as family situations change.
Okay, I just would really, I think, I do last, in the spring, I think that, I mean, you really, your team came up with some really creative solutions, but I also, I also know that just statewide, whether you're talking rural, suburban, urban, you know, access, quality access to the internet is pervasive amongst pretty much every single district. And so while we have the devices, and that's been awesome, and just, I think just, we have to just keep looking at creative strategies. And again, I know that everybody's put in so much work. My next question is around the involvement of our teachers, and how involved have our teachers been in really that instructional piece of how this actually plays out in a, in a day with the hybrid? You know, for example, you know, for elementary teachers, are they, you know, they're teaching the days in school, but then they're also teaching some aspect of the distance learning, the off days? What's the, like, kind of thought behind that, or, you know, how does that play out during a typical week?
I'm wondering, Rob, if you might want to take this one and kind of share some of it, but, you know, as far as for the A-B model, let me pull this up here. You know, what we're seeing in terms of that alternating A and B model, we're seeing where, for instance, teachers would, you know, be working and supporting students who, with some potential flip content for those days that those students are off, possibly some online check-ins and instruction as well, supporting around independent work. And, you know, obviously, that, this is going to entail a tremendous amount of planning for our teachers, and so, you know, part of the, the idea around Friday is, is to allow for some of that additional planning to support that work. It's going to be different for many of our teachers in terms of how they're going to have to balance that and, and will be certainly a challenge. And so our goals would be to support that through professional development. Frankly, the sooner we know the model moving forward, the better we can propel, help prepare our teachers for that. So I'm wondering, Rob, from your elementary perspective, if you'd like to add something?
Sure, and Jeremy can, Jeremy Willie can certainly join in and help with that as well. First, I would just tell you that from my conversations with staff, where their highest concerns right now are the domino effects that Laurel had described earlier with staffing. I have absolute confidence in the staff at Woodland, as I do across every site, that their pedagogical understanding and knowledge is second to none. They, they will figure this out. That's not what we're, I'm worried about with, for them. It, they're thoughtful, they're talented, they're flexible, they're collaborative, and we'll be able to get it done. We'll also be able to collaborate with our equity staff, with our, with our learning and achievement department. But I, I'll go back to what I said before and the fact that a building is not just classroom teachers. We have highly talented support professionals, ESPs. We have counselors, we have support staff, and there's a myriad of people. And some of our buildings have a Title I staff, we have interventionists. There are multiple different ways in which we can really collaborate and be creative in how we can do some of those online check-ins on those at-home days. So I'm very, very confident that we will find the pathway forward. And we're talking a little bit about how to be tight and loose both as a district. And the ways that you do that is you tighten up those essential learnings and you identify how and who has what responsibility, but then you also provide some, some ability for flexibility at different sites. What happens at Basswood, depending on their larger population, is different than what happens at Crestview, which is different than what happens at Woodland. And so, anyway, I, I just think that we will have full, full ability to be able to meet those needs.
Maybe, Jeremy, this is a great question, so I just want to make sure Jeremy has a chance to respond to this because it is a challenging one, and I know they've been working really hard on it. Jeremy, is there anything you'd like to add?
No, I'm, I'm in complete agreement with Rob. I think is clearly evident that we have the teachers that can absolutely step forward and lead this work, whether it's at Woodland or at other sites. I think that they have the capacity to be able to engage in this work on behalf of students. I think, you know, we've, we've been in conversations about a myriad of different ideas on how to really make this work, and we're trying to think as creatively as we possibly can because to Rob and to Brian and to Bart's point, throughout the course of their presentation, we want to be with kids as much as we can be with kids. And when we can't be with kids, we want that experience to be as absolutely meaningful as possible. So I think we're trying to do whatever we can to flesh out some of those specifics, but I think we're, you know, really trying to have meaningful conversations, both at the system level and the site level around that, that, that dynamic tension around how much flexibility do we want to provide to sites to be able to flexibly respond to the needs of their students? And how much do we need to really be thinking about in terms of expectations from a systemic perspective so that we are really being as responsive as we can to the feedback that we've been provided in not only our distance learning survey, but also our fall comprehensive survey report that many of you have seen around families wanting a very consistent experience for their students? And so that's really the, the primary focus of our conversations, and, and we're really working as collaboratively as we can with teachers, with elementary and middle school and high school principals, and with district leadership to do whatever we can to try to figure out the best way that we can move forward with that.
Okay, I just, I have one more comment to that, and I'll let my other colleagues go. I guess that sounds great. I, resoundingly, and I'm being really honest, what I've been asked is what's the instructional plan and support, and what does that look like? Because like, the difference to me, if I understand this right, the Distance Learning Academy has kind of a structure in place, from what I understand. And I guess I'm not as confident in that. I'm not understanding how the hybrid model, the expectation on our teachers and ESPs and families, like for instance, like if, if the platform is CSO, you know, how do you ensure that, you know, families know how to use CSO, you know, and are able to navigate through that? I mean, it all kind of comes together, and I think that's the piece that over and over again, I sent about sixty-plus questions to Superintendent McIntyre, just from people asking. I opened it up, and I do think that's what it is. And I understand that, you know, we need to kind of make a decision tonight or to, you know, move something forward to be able to really dive deep, but just that acknowledgement of that instructional piece is going to be really key, especially as a decision for families come for, you know, come this Sunday at 9:00 PM to make a decision for their families. You know, I think that's, that's something that we need to look at. So I would just leave that there, and we can move on, and I can hold any of my other comments.
Well, Kelsey, I think that's a really, really good question, and I think that's something that we've talked truthfully quite a bit about. I mean, when we think about that Fall 2020 Comprehensive Survey Report that we've gotten from families and that we've gotten from staff members, one of the biggest tasks for the Department of Learning and Achievement, for my department, is to figure out ways that we can more effectively and comprehensively support our families with the learning that they need to actively engage their students with whatever it is we task of them, you know? Whether it's hybrid learning experience, whether it's distance learning experience, whether it's the Distance Learning Academy, we want to give them, families, the professional development that they need to be successful. So in our department, some of the things that we're talking about is the, the comprehensive development of some type of a, of a parent toolkit, if you will, of a, that will help them have the professional learning experiences that they need related to CSO or Schoology if you're a secondary student, or with G Suite for any student, just to be able to navigate those technology schools and really be able to meaningfully support their students. navigate those technology schools and really be able to meaningfully support their students in whatever it is that we're hoping to ask of them to do academically with their students. We're also looking at trying to develop what we're calling, and I love this phrase, a virtual backpack for our students, of what are all of the digital tools and resources and professional learning modules that our students need to be successful? Again, whether it's with CSO or Schoology, or how do I navigate Google Slides, or how do I create a Google Doc? We're trying to think about all of the different pieces of feedback that we got throughout our distance learning surveys, throughout our fall survey, our fall-for-this-year surveys, and really make that feedback as absolutely actionable as we possibly can. Because one of the biggest priorities from the Department of Learning and Achievement is making sure that if we are asking our community what they want, what they need, and what they prefer, and they are sharing that information with us, then it is absolutely my responsibility and our department's responsibility to be as responsive as we possibly can be to that feedback. So that's, truthfully and most transparently, Kelsey, that's, that's our goal. We want to absolutely set up every single parent, every kid, and every teacher up to be as successful as they possibly can be. And we're not going to be perfect, but we're going to do the absolute best we possibly can, and that's my goal.
Yeah, and just to piggyback off on that one final thing, one of the recommendations from all of our groups is to establish some type of parent academy, some type of family opportunity. The day of the open house, we know, is just likely not going to be possible, and so building leaders are really wrestling with and contemplating, how do we set up both virtual and in-person but staggered opportunities for, for parents to come in, sit down with their students in kind of a, meet the teacher in a very socially-distanced fashion? Not only to hear the expectations for in-person learning, but also to go through and have that device in hand and literally teach them how to access the different points and when they should look for it. So those are all things that are weighing on all building leaders, and we're, we, I know we'll be meeting this week and again, early next week to start to iron out some of those, those logistics. But again, that grace and just the understanding that if you're thinking of it and people and teachers are thinking about it, we're thinking about it as well, and we're trying to be as thoughtful and contemplative as possible. We do have the benefit of time, which we did not have in March. And so to set those opportunities up in a staggered and meaningful fashion is something we're aspiring to do as well.
Thank you.
Yeah, and Kelsey, I'll just, I'll just echo Rob's sentiment quickly and say, that's one of the most beautiful and organic pieces that came out of the instructional work group with Steve, was this whole component around, how do we think differently about what that back-to-school experience is like for students and families so that we can be far more responsive and sensitive to our current climate and our current culture in ways that we may not have had an opportunity or may not have done before? And it's just really, really powerful to listen to these subgroups of, you know, elementary and middle school and high school principals and teachers and district leaders work in collaboration with one another to really talk creatively about how we can be more impactful for our kids. So to Rob's point, it's just, it's, it's really exciting. It's an exciting opportunity.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Director Muscata Jones.
Okay, so, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. So... I don't even know where to start. I have, obviously, a whole bunch, and I sent a whole bunch to Superintendent McIntyre. And first of all, I know that everybody's been working really hard. I super appreciate that. I know that we're trying really hard to figure out what the best solutions are for all of our kids. I appreciate a lot of the details about multi-language learners and special ed, et cetera. So here's, here's where I'm struggling. So today I had a meeting with my colleagues in Columbia Heights. And Columbia Heights and Fridley, although they are in Anoka, and Anoka's numbers say that they could actually go in-person for elementary, they are choosing to start with distance learning and then phase in, phase in the in-person. So not really distance learning, it's starting out as hybrid, but hybrid means the highest need kids are in the school. Even my job as a pre-K teacher, we're starting online. So then I look at what Oseo is doing, and I understand that Oseo is not Columbia Heights, but I look at the numbers for Brooklyn Park and Brooklyn Center, and they're some of the highest in Hennepin County, they're half of our district. I'm just, I'm struggling, I'm just struggling here, I just have to be honest. So what I really need as a teacher is for someone to walk me through a day as a second grader, as a second grade teacher, and kind of as an ESP, because this is what's going on in my head. Because I've taught these grades. How is the playground going to get cleaned when I have my kids and there's only one of me and 10 of my kids? And how are they going to make it from one place or another? How am I going to keep kids from tackling each other? What's going to happen when the kid goes running down the hall and I don't have my ESP because it's me and, and nine kids? What's, all of these pieces, I think, is what I'm hearing from a lot of teachers and families of what's it, what's it going to look like? And I know we don't have the details of all those, but it's really important to have some sort of sense that... If, if I say, yeah, let's go hybrid, and we have a big outbreak, and then we have to switch to distance, then we're talking about transitional nightmares for all sorts of people. So I really want to be very sure about whatever decision is made tonight, and if you can walk me through some of that. And I also want to know for a seventh grader and for a 10th grader, so just kind of walk me through that. Can anybody help me with that?
Well, let me kind of take a stab at it, and, and to be honest, again, and transparent, Jackie, these are the things that we need to work with our, our leaders, our site-based leaders on and, and sort through. You know, as, as part of what each of those days are going to look like and how individual principals are going to be making decisions about supporting, whether it's the recess or outside, and all those things have to be, you know, obviously balanced with who's in the building, you know, who do we have available? And so, you know, as we dig into this moving forward, the, the principals will, will, you know, certainly need to take, take kind of a deep dive into what, you know, what they're typical, what they're going to see in terms of their typical day, and then involve, you know, their staff in terms of supporting around the planning. You know, for instance, you know, they've modeled out, again, kind of more on the instructional day and what that would look like, but, you know, we're anticipating that each and every one of those interactions are going to have to be guided by our, you know, our health guidance. So you mentioned about the tackling and, and the support, I know, those are the things that, you know, teachers are, are going to have to, you know, manage to their degree and be so supported by the administrators, you know, in terms of trying to sort through what that looks like. So it's really kind of sorting out that comprehensive plan, and I'm going to open it up. I don't know, from a seventh grade standpoint, do you, maybe from the middle school, do you have a, a sense, in terms of, Brian, about what you're thinking and kind of how you may approach that as, as a building principal?
Yeah, I mean, I think it's a really, really good question, and I, I attempted to highlight it back in my overview of the hybrid model, but teaching kids how to do school, you know, just after being gone for five months is, is important. We have to do that just over regular summer break, but that is what we'll have to use our advisory time and our team structured time to do, is to teach kids, you know, the importance of wearing a mask, the importance of not having a large group of kids in the cafeteria, you know, that caf, or the restrooms, the cafeteria things, how we drop off kids in the morning. There's a lot of safety precautions that we're going to have to teach kids how to do because they're going to be excited to come back to school. They're always excited to come back, but it's going to come back in a different, different way. So at, at Oseo Middle School, I anticipate that we're going to be using that, that advisory time and use that, that opportunity to teach that social, social learning of, of what is acceptable in this new way we're doing school.
And I would add too, again, tomorrow, as Rob Meyer mentioned, we're going to be meeting with the principals and going through that COVID safety plan. So outlined in that plan, our steps around social distancing and how to support classroom arrangements, hallways, everything. So as they begin to do that site-by-site and unpack it, I think some of those things, Jackie, are going to become clear. But I think this is where we're going to need the time and the grace to really sort of sort through this and, and plan, and it's, and I understand it's going to be frustrating for some as we sort through it. Now, our hope is, in collaboration, like I said, with the principal and those teams and that site coordinator who's going to be working on, on the safety plan and supporting and, and other, you know, other individuals, to include our ESP staff, to really figure out how do we keep staff and students safe?
I don't know if this would be helpful, Steve, but I could share some things from our summer programs because we work with elementary, middle, and high school, if that's helpful.
Yeah.
Okay, Jackie, so we just finished running summer programs with our multilingual students at the elementary, middle, and high school levels, so I could share a little bit about what that looked like for us and the students when we were working together, and actually some of the feedback that we got from parents. The comments that they wrote in were about some of the things that they most appreciated about the program was for them and for their students to, to know what it means to be safe and healthy while still learning together in person. So, you know, we did spend a lot of time at the beginning and, and every day because a lot of the health and safety things that we're doing are not natural for any of us as humans in the way that we interact with each other, you know? But of course, we have things marked on floors to help students, we have things up in the walls, we have particularly at the elementary level, you know, created Germbuster Awards. Students did experiments to learn more about, like, why is this important, how do germs get transmitted, and how long do they stay in places? We coordinated with the custodial services so that playgrounds were cleaned, you know, periodically throughout the day. The students did a lot of different things with hand washing and, you know, singing and, you know, all kinds of things. But we found that one of the things that we had to do is kind of keep reinventing, you know? So first we were helicopters in the hallway, well, that got after a couple of weeks comfortable, and so then we would, we would shift to something new. But one of the great things that we experienced is the way that the staff, both licensed and non-licensed staff, really collaborated together to keep finding new and innovative ways to support the students and each of learning, and how do we, how do we collaborate still amongst classrooms virtually, and, you know, all these things? And so I think there was a lot of really beautiful example that we could also use in our childcare programs that we could use as we're planning for it as well.
Yeah, and I was wondering from that standpoint too, Jackie, Carrie, Carrie, if you wanted to kind of also share kind of your perspective, that might be helpful.
Yeah, I would say we've learned a lot since we've been offering childcare since, you know, March, so definitely would reiterate what Kirsten was saying around, you're constantly rethinking of ways to re-educate and re-teach, and as guidance changed, the kids have been the most resilient, and the staff have been eager to implement those different guidelines that have come into play. Staff have been super creative on thinking through virtual field trips and learning experiences for the kids that are in childcare. Yeah, I know it's a different model than the actual classroom instruction, but childcare gave us a lot of opportunities to learn about how do we, you know, think through when kids are coming into the space, how are we engaging with families and building those relationships? We too just sent out a survey, and families have been great about loving the communication around the childcare program, super glad their kids have been able to engage within a pod of kids and have some social interaction and the benefits to their kids with that. And then I'll, again, re-educating staff constantly as new guidance comes along, right? There's a lot of intense just PD and management that happens, so sites are going to have to really be intentional, and I think, you know, one of the things that'll be nice is having that Friday time potentially to pull staff together, right? In this recommended model, we were always trying to find little overlaps of time in childcare, not having a full, you know, because we're offering childcare five days a week. So I'm really trying to find those times to give opportunities for staff to learn from each other, even if it's they're sitting in their classroom, virtually interacting with each other to, you know, mitigate some of that intermixing.
Jackie, just a couple of quick thoughts for you, I'll, I'll chime in on this and not to prolong it, but I did want to just mention, as I'm talking with neighboring districts who have also started to commit to, at least our immediate neighbors, our efforts are ahead of where they are, and they're committing to. We're all kind of in this weird place now that we have guidance. We're, we're now working really hard to operationalize that and, and put in logistics. And this week, we will have our, Barb referenced it, our, our comprehensive plan that has 17 sections with 50 pages, it has all those really specific details mapped out, and we're that close, we're at the finish line to get that out. And just being able to commit to it and hearing that we've had some, some small successes with our English learners and our special education programming this summer, we've learned from those things too. So I think of your question in a sense of, we're always teaching behavioral expectations for adults and to our children, even at the start of every year, we're redoing that, so they'll be different this year, but it's that process. And I think having our staff back to help plan that and help build it so that there's greater ownership will be really important. So once we get new staff on the 24th and our other staff back on the 31st, I know our building leaders will engage all of our employees to help, help build that plan together. We're going to give them the running start from the district level, and then to Rob's point, they're going to, they're going to personalize that to their sites. And between now and then, we can do the individual site audits and make sure that their health plans are in place so that they're set up for success when staff come back. I'll pause there.
Just a reminder to everyone that I do teach, and that I teach four-year-olds, and so my job is to teach expectations and behavior expectations every single day. So when I ask these questions, it's not because I think that the answer is as simple as re-teaching and teaching behavior expectations. As we're teaching and re-teaching behavior expectations, there are a lot of mistakes that happen along the way. And so my concern is, on those mistakes along the way, what risk are we giving to our students and our staff and our families? And so I, I understand, I taught summer school as well, I happen to do it online, but it's a much different, summer school is much different than the school year. It's just a whole different ballgame. So I, I do appreciate your, your input on that, and I do agree, we do have to teach expectations. I'm wondering how we can do it with the staff that we have when we're trying to make sure that there are kids, just, learning, distance learning, so day one of school, right? There's kids learning distance learning, and there's kids learning in-person, and who is managing all of that and the behavior expectations? Just something I'm throwing out there. So I'm going to let some other people ask questions if they want before I ask any more questions because I do have a few more.
Jackie, just a comment, we very much love the fact that you live it as a teacher every day. I always kind of find myself making sure I respond with our listening audience not having that same experience, and how will it help them understand where we're trying to go? So we're very fortunate to have you as a teacher on our board, and that's greatly helpful, and thanks for understanding that we're trying to make sure we're, we're sharing that information with anyone else who's participating or listening with us.
Thank you for that insight, I appreciate that.
Thank you. I know that Director Douglas was having some issues getting on and off here. Heather, are you available?
I am, I'm, I'm on, but I am having some really significant technical difficulties. I keep getting bumped out of the call. So just bear with me if I drop off for some reason. First, I just wanted to say a huge thank you to Superintendent Corey McIntyre, our administrative team, and the entire team. um, of staff who's been involved in this, um, this entire process. You have spent a profound amount of time and consideration, um, giving thought to the development of these learning models. And I know it's been a tremendous undertaking to prepare these learning models, um, prior to the release of the recommendation from Governor Walz, MDE and MDH. Um, so, uh, I do want to recognize that I understand that you, you put in a lot of work and tried to gather as much data and information as you could for us prior to having that recommendation, um, given to us. And also I really wanna commend you for having, um, really taken into consideration and having awareness for and concern for the interests of stakeholders. We have a lot of stakeholders with varied, um, needs. And, um, I, I feel like you guys have done a really tremendous job of trying to, um, pay attention to each of those different complexities. And I really appreciate you publicly acknowledging, uh, you, the complexity of this decision and giving specific attention to the urgency that our community is feeling in receiving this information. I have a lot of concerns. Um, Cory, you and I have spoken about this, um, prior to the meeting. And, um, I'm very concerned about the inconsistency of the fourteen-day case range rate model based on county population data. I'm concerned about the consistency and continuity of education for our student population and for our staff. For planning purposes alone, it's a, it's a really difficult model to swallow. I, I feel like one of the overwhelming things that we're hearing is how am I supposed to plan for this? How do I make sure that the needs of my students are met? How do I make sure the needs of my children are met? Um, business owners are concerned, uh, you know, how am I supposed to operate if my employees who are residents of this community have to suddenly change their availability due to the schools changing? Um, so there's a, a lot of concern about that and I understand that you've made it very clear that, um, any change to the model will not be taken lightly. And I really appreciate that acknowledgement. Um, I want it to be really clear to our families, uh, and all of our stakeholders that we're, um, our intention is not to flip-flop between the models, um, all willy-nilly, which I think that it kind of, um, might be presented in a way that some people feel that that's what's going to happen. So thank you for acknowledging that. Um, but I am still very concerned about the potential changes and the impact to our students. Students need consistency, particularly students who already have inconsistencies happening at home, whether they have their own health concerns, their parents have health concerns, all of the changes that are just happening within our community right now anyways. Um, and I feel it's really important that we operate in a way that we give our kids the best chance possible by giving them high levels of consistency. Um, and I think that what I've been hearing through this presentation is that our staff have every intent of taking the necessary precautions to make sure that we can uphold that level of consistency. And so I just wanted to acknowledge that. Um, I don't, I have a, I don't really know. I have so many, so many concerns and so many questions. But ultimately what it comes down to is that I feel like most of them are, are not specifically directed at our administration, but really at, um, the Minnesota Department of Health and their recommendations. Because, um, we can only work within what we're given. And I just wanna acknowledge that for our families that, oh, you know, I, I know that one, one perspective I'm hearing a lot of is why can't we just go back? And, um, I really appreciate the slide that specifically acknowledged that we can't just go back because of the Minnesota Department of Health guidelines. And I was wondering Cory, if you could just, or anybody else elaborate on, um, what would happen in our district if we decided to ignore the recommendations? How would our families be impacted?
Well, the state wouldn't let us continue forward with it. They would close us down. The commissioner would intervene. This is a short answer.
Okay, so I just wanted to have you answer that question, um, for the public who's asking that of us a lot, um, so that they understand that we would not be able to operate as an educational system. So thank you for sharing that. I don't really know, um, what else to ask at this point. I think my colleagues have asked a lot of really good questions and I haven't been really thoroughly satisfied with some of the answers. I feel like specifically around what does a day look like? And how do we manage these little things? And those are nuances that I think we're not gonna figure out till we get into the work. So, um, I'm gonna, uh, let some of my other board members ask their questions and I will pipe in if I have more questions.
Thank you Heather. Uh, Director Muscata Jones, did you wanna follow up? You had some other questions?
Yeah, um, I'm gonna, I'm, I'm trying to see if everybody can be annoyed with me today and not just, um, the usual people. Um, sorry levity, have to do it. Some be smile. Thanks. Um, this, this is what I'm wondering right now. Can we allow some extra, um, time for teachers before school to work on some of these things and pay them to help? Um, um, to learn some of the extra PD, to do some curriculum writing, to do any of that, to kind of help, um, plan for how, some of these nitty-gritty details, including the ESPs? Because, um, as a teacher, there are things I do not think about, but the ESPs know. And so if we can get them around to, just from a safety standpoint, if we're gonna go forward with a, um, hybrid model, if we can get more of our people on, um, coming up with things that we probably might not think of, I think that would, um, be helpful. So that's my first question on that. Is that a possibility?
I can start with that. I think the, the reality of how it, how we would have to do that is start the year later with kids. So it'd be a question of whether, um, the board would support students coming or starting later because our teachers are under contract at a certain point. And then we wouldn't be able to get them all in together at the same time, even if we wanted to. So you'd almost have to ask, uh, families to not have kids come, uh, till like a week later. And I know some districts have entertained that, some even have pushed their calendars back a little bit. Some, some districts actually were starting before the holiday and now are, um, moving that back a week. So try to create what you're talking about Jackie, I think, so.
I'm, I'm sorry. I don't think I may, I may not have been, um, clear. I don't mean bring all the staff back. I mean ask for staff who want to get paid extra to do this. I'm writing curriculum for, um, Columbia Heights in the next couple of weeks and I'm getting paid for doing that. That's just an example. Is that something that we can do? Um, does our budget allow? Can the board allow, you know, extra funds, whatever might be needed to help, um, make sure that this is the best, uh, all the way around?
Chair Ostaffy, a point of order. Uh, I believe that we're talking about supporting the recommendation. I'm not sure this is a discussion to provide operational direction or tactics, just to clarify. But we can communicate thoughts and ideas. I, I don't think that's the discussion at this time.
Uh, I, I would, I would agree with that. I, and, uh, those are very good points that are being brought up and that is something to talk about, uh, from an operational standpoint. But, uh, at, at this point, uh, you know, you are correct. We are looking at focusing questions regarding opening. Now, that's something, uh, Superintendent McIntyre, you, you, you know, we can, you can answer, you can take into consideration as we operationalize this and we will have five weeks to, to operationalize this. So, uh, I'll, I'll leave it at that and, and, uh, good question Jackie. And, uh, and, uh, it is something that we could certainly consider, but the, now is not the, the time for that.
Um, can I ask this question then? Uh, who is choosing the essential standards that we are going to be using? Who's on that committee? Is that by grade? Is it by teacher? Is it by school? Is it by? How's that happening?
Uh, this is, I think, gonna be part of our conversation that we're, we're planning on having next week with, between our facilitators and, and, um, our folk in LNA. Uh, that's gonna be part of that, that planning moving forward. So, um, right now that's a, a kind of an internal committee, Jackie.
Okay, um, then I have a question about Friday's planning time. Um, I'm trying to figure out how to plan for, as a teacher. And I, I realize that you're gonna be teaching the same thing on A and B. Um, how to make sure that all the things that have been listed here, collaboration, um, time for, um, planning for videos, making videos. I'm just saying when I did distance learning in the fall, or in the spring, I was spending nineteen hours a day doing, um, just distance learning. So to plan for my individual students who are all individual, um, have differing needs in two different formats. I'm just trying to figure out how that actually will work or if that's enough planning time and if we can just take that into consideration for our teachers.
I'm sorry Jackie, did you repeat that?
I don't think this is a question actually. I think it's just, I just wanna make a statement now. I just, I want to, I want to make sure that for the good of our students, that, um, we're not overworking our teachers in all the different planning. So I heard, um, Principal Chance say we can be really creative and figure this out and I super appreciate that. And often that's the case that we want to do, but then reality hits and we've got all of these, um, things that we have to do. So I just wanna put a plug in for, um, the quality of the instruction for our students, that we make sure that teachers have ample, um, time to do that, do these, um, collaborations. Because I think it's, uh, particularly important with EL and special ed and all those, um, pieces. Another, a question I do have is why aren't pre-K getting devices? Anthony? Cause their, pre-K is gonna be the same, right?
Yep, uh, so pre-K again varies depending on whether we have far, four-star program, VPK title programming. So it, it looks different, um, as well as looking at, you know, funding resources. So as we talk about the technology we're currently, um, providing, part of it is we're stretching our tech levy dollars, which were part of a one-to-one program four through twelve and extending that down to K. Um, so again, looking at available resources to equip and support. We, you know, that's how we've got to the one-to-one down to K. We are having ongoing conversations around, you know, pre-K and what programming looks like with the different pre-K leaders and directors. Um, because it is multifaceted, because it's run under, you know, a variety of, of different programming, which, um, potentially Carrie and/or Michael can add in there as they facilitate the different pre-K programs.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Superintendent McIntyre, uh, you're recommending the course of action to open, uh, in a hybrid model. Uh, I would assume you only do that with the confidence that you, the administrative team, the sixty-seven people on the, uh, uh, on the planning commission believe that that can be achieved. Is that correct?
As of today, yeah, that's exactly right. And I'm gonna repeat some things multiple times. This is what we know today. And our goal is to give time for families and staff. Things can change and they might, they might not. I mean, as good as we need, we can't afford to wait, is my point. And if we think we're gonna make these kinds of decisions two or three weeks from now, we're really gonna be in trouble. So we need to make hard decisions now based on what we know. Be okay with the fact it could change and we may have to change course. And I, I understand what Heather and many others have said, that consistency part is, is critical. Um, but that's, that's the hard spot every district's in right now. I think we're better off deciding, so we give as much possible time to address all these questions and operationalize and get everything in place instead of being where we are today in two weeks or in three weeks. Where some districts are, are kind of waiting to make some decisions. So that's just from my perspective. How to, you know, that's kind of how I think about it, Mike.
Okay, thank you. And, and as you had stated earlier, uh, this is where, based upon community feedback, family feedback, that this is where the community wants us to go. Uh, is that correct?
Yes and no. It depends on who you ask. Um, you know, we got a wide range of, of feedback and that's what's really tough. So that's why I fall back on what the model's recommending, because I do trust our experts at the Health Department and MDE and we're kind of bound to it honestly. So I really think that is our charge, uh, because we, I respect and honor every perspective on this. It's, there's no winning, uh, to get everybody on the same page because of the complexity of all of it. It's really, really challenging. So I, I think we, we are a little bit in a spot where we really need to follow and almost are, you know, again obligated to follow the district or the state, uh, guidance from the governor's order and the MDH and MDE. And I'm, I'm thankful of that everyone's acknowledged. We have an amazing team. That's why I have confidence in us making it happen, because we've proven we can make it happen. Now, it wasn't perfect last spring, but we accomplished amazing things in two weeks. So I, I think just giving, giving the chance to maximize the time we need to operationalize things is really critical.
And, and as you mentioned, some, some families do want certainty. They, you know, uncertainty is a concern. And we do have that option available through the Distance Learning Academy, correct?
Yeah, I think that's a great point that with, with my recommendation of hybrid, it gives families a choice. Uh, they might not like the choices, but it is a choice and that's the best we can provide right now based on the parameters we've been given by the state. So there are families who want their children in school and that's a choice they can make. And there are families that don't and we've got fifteen hundred that are already chosen not to. So, um, I think that's a really important, um, element for our district. Um, I'm, I share the concerns. We have a lot of work to do to make sure everybody's safe and make sure that we can do all the things we've talked about tonight and that's the work in front of us. Um, so, yeah.
Okay, thank you Superintendent. Uh, are there any other questions from the board members?
I, I do. I have a couple of questions. Um,
When Kelsey's done.
Oh, okay, thanks. Um, they're probably a little more detailed. Um, and, you know, you, um, Mr. Lehan had mentioned about just what the Minnesota State High School League recommendations or direction had to come out with. But, um, in addition to the athletics, I'm wondering around, um, our other programs that we are equally, you know, build community. So like orchestra or, um, any of our music or our, um, or any of the, um, theater, you know, is there any direction on that? I mean, I think that, you know, with this model, what implications does it have? Um, because I do think, like I said, equally, you know, as with athletics, I think this is also what builds that real sense of community. So with hybrid, if, if that's how we move forward, um, you know, or, or frankly, DLA, you know, how, how are students still able to be involved and what does that look like?
Yeah, Kelsey, that's a great question. In fact, I just sent Kwan a text not too long ago as he was sitting on the planning committee. As of right now, there has not been guidelines for marching band, for instance, or musicals, for instance. They're gonna go back to the table tomorrow and he's gonna raise some of those questions. So hopefully I'll be able to circle back with you at that time.
Okay, thank you.
Kelsey, I would add though with our, um, it's like, I love the question, because it's like, I think, um, maybe it was Brian or I can't remember who, but it, for a lot of, Rob maybe said, it is, it is for a lot of our students, the way they are engaged and connected to us through, through the different, um, opportunities they have through activities. And by having in-person through the hybrid model creates at least oppor, greater opportunities for those things to happen, even if they're somewhat of a modified, what you're seeing from the High School League is a modified approach. So, um, how we tried to do band and orchestra and choir in the spring remotely was really tough. We did some pretty cool things, but it's much different than, um, what we are gonna be able to do with live classes. And I know the department's given guidance on choir and, and FIAID and some other things to really comply with the health guide, guidelines. I don't know if Jeremy, there's anything else from your department you've been wrestling with on this?
No, we actually have. We've been working, working closely with, uh, Dave throughout the course of this week in health and safety. Um, just to outline some protocol for music education and, uh, the students that are participating in music classes and. music education and, uh, the students that are participating in music classes. And, um, Dave and his team have been super helpful and uh, my music specialists and our team have been really working collaboratively to outline, uh, basically create a template for a plan, which I think is really, um, really going to work and be effective for our students and for our teachers. Um, and so I'm excited about those possibilities. Those templates are based on research. Um, not just from the NASA, National Association of Music Educators, but also from, uh, I believe we have a research study from the University of Colorado. So we're doing everything we can to think about how we can put teachers and students in the absolute most safe and successful learning environments they can, knowing that we have, um, the luxury of having in a, uh, an award-winning music program in our district. That's been nationally recognized for, um, a number of years, far beyond when I was even here. So we just want to do whatever we can to work with Dave and his team to continue to have a successful and a safe experience for our kids. And so that's what we're really working to do.
Thank you so much for both of your responses. Um, and then I, I believe we touched on this and I'm so sorry, but, um, if it's a repeat, but can you remind me how, um, oh, and the, the Distance Learning Academy students are also involved in that, right, Jeremy? Okay. Um, and then can you remind me, do we know how we're going to? Is Jeremy talking?
No, that's you.
No, I'm, I'm you, Kelsey.
You were, okay. Um, I just saw your mouth going, maybe my computer's delayed. Um, how do we decide which students are in A and B? Do we, is that decided yet or is that something that will be coming?
Well, if you're asking me to answer that question, I would tell you, I don't, I don't think it's decided yet. I think that's one of the biggest challenges of moving forward with the hybrid model. If I'm, you know, as I always joke, if I'm thinking like a recovering elementary, elementary principal, which I am, you know, I'm thinking about how do I create class lists where I have half my class in A B, A, A day and half in B day. And I can't even imagine the complexities that Brian and Bart are trying to sort through as secondary principals. But I think, um, that in concert with some of the, you know, the feedback that we've been inquiring about with, uh, respect to transportation and Troy and his team. I think we're trying to pull those pieces together, um, and really try to develop a plan that makes sense moving forward. I think, you know, tonight, uh, as Cory said, I think tonight is the first step. And I think, you know, as I, I talk with my team and I talk with teachers and I talk with principals across the district, everybody wants to know every single detail. And we're doing the absolute best we can to come up with every piece of information we can in the moment. And, um, it's going to take us some time because we want to do it well and we want to do it right because that's what we do in Osceola area schools. Uh, so that's, that's really what we're focusing on. So I'm not sure.
Yeah, I could, maybe I can jump in a little too. Um, and, uh, and maybe Ron will as well. Uh, yeah, Kelsey, I think you're asking, this has been uh, probably one of the more challenging aspects of this. Uh, I know our secondary folk have been working closely, uh, with transportation. We've been meeting over the last few weeks about delineating, you know, working on who's in, um, in the A and B groups and, uh, preparing that as well as syncing that with our middle school. Because as Ron had mentioned at the, at the front end, our desire is to match up, um, you know, siblings as, uh, in throughout this process. And so some of these things are already in, in, in process. And now we have schools or we have staff that are reporting, uh, to the elementary schools and they're going to begin their process, um, actually, uh, tomorrow and begin to work on that. And so it's been a coordination between transportation and our site leaders to make sure that all of these, these elements are, are, are flowing through the hybrid model. So there's been quite a bit of work, work on that is, uh, at this point. I don't know if Ron, you want to add or Troy's on there because I know we've worked with Troy.
Yeah, I would just say that I, again, as I had talked about earlier, as the site leaders, uh, in particular at the high school and middle school, as they looked at how do we balance capacity in our classes for those schedules at the high school level. And then, uh, the next step is really looking at siblings. And then transportation gets involved and really takes a look at how do we balance capacities on the buses and keep those siblings in place for the elementary to coincide with those secondaries. And then ultimately shifting that to the elementary buildings to kind of finish out all those students that are not taking transportation. So it's kind of like a four-phase process. Uh, Infosys has been, uh, heavily involved as well in helping us identify where those siblings, um, and, and because sometimes they don't necessarily share the same names. So those households, uh, that are together. And, and so, uh, making sure that we have, um, some consistency with those siblings. So we're, we're kind of most of the way through it, there's still a little bit of work to do, but, uh, you know, th- that was really a timely process because we have to get, uh, class schedules then altered for all of our high school, uh, kids in particular, but also we have to now do, uh, rerouting for the entire district. And so that's going to be a monumental task for our transportation department. So that's why we started engaging in that work, um, you know, within the last couple of weeks, uh, to make sure that we had the time to be able to do both of those.
Thank you. Okay, a couple, a couple more questions. Um, but don't worry, Cheryl Staffie, uh, the other school boards went till midnight last night. So we're actually like really good timing. Just kidding. Um, so, uh, you know, I think that the other theme that I really hear is just, you know, when we were at kind of like pre-pandemic, pre-other pandemic, um, really talking about engagement. And engagement with, you know, not only our families and students, but, um, with, with our teachers and ESPs. And I just, you know, as I think about how we're moving forward, I mean, there's, there's so many unknowns and, you know, and literally a month from now, we could be in a totally different position, which we're forced, you know, that we don't, we weren't going to even have the luxury to even have a choice. Um, who knows, right? We have to be flexible. But, you know, I just would ask that as, um, Mr. Leehan and, um, Mr. Steven Anderson Hall kind of developed this, what this engagement looks like. That, you know, we're just, it's just this, I, I can't remember, is it Kirsten? She, it said that, that two-way communication. So we're not only pushing things out, but we're also receiving things in, but in a way that's, um, allows some flexibility and nimbleness, um, on our side too, as, as a school district. Um, because I think that's going to be so important, you know, that, that feedback and, and just to, to build this trust. I mean, I think we're in this place now where it's so unprecedented, um, that, you know, that communication is just more critical now than it ever has been. And so, um, and there are a lot of questions. I mean, and I'm a parent of four kids and I'm like, I want to know like every single detail of this. And I know that's not reasonable right this second, but, um, but you know, you know, I think we all know this and with kids and our students that, you know, they're our most, they're the most precious part of our society, you know, and, um, this, um, I think COVID, we don't even know the impacts of it. Um, I think there's so much burden a lot of times put on the education system that we have to like respond and answer and kind of be that almost that catch-all because we deal with every, pretty much every aspect of our families and their, our students' lives. And, um, so I just really commend this team and, and our teachers and our ESPs and our custodial staff and our food staff and everyone for, um, really coming together and, and, and this kind of unknown and, um, and moving forward with a really solid, you know, we'll come, I know we'll get there with a really some solid recommendations. And I also was going to say, I've been, um, I have a network of colleagues across, um, the state of Minnesota, other school board directors who we talk often and just kind of say what's going on. And I do, I would agree with you, Superintendent McIntyre. I mean, I don't think anybody has it figured out right now. Um, and we're all really at that same boat where, um, you know, trying to take what MDE and MDH, um, and the governor is kind of putting the parameters on our, our decision-making. And I also believe that, you know, in this type of a decision, school boards aren't necessarily required to take action, you know? And so I appreciate, you know, you including us and bringing us in, um, to get some of our guidance and feedback. Um, I, and I, I think that's really important. So, um, um, we'll be, well, I'll be definitely holding our feet to the fire here because I'm, I really want to stay in tuned with our, you know, um, our community inclusive of our staff. And, and then I would ask that, you know, as data is available and they, and then the state and starts to figure out what the cadence of that looks like, that we really do take a conservative approach to the numbers. Um, understanding that they're lagging a little bit. And so, um, in, in looking at the future of, of, um, our students to ensure that they're safe.
All right. Thank you, Kelsey. And let's, uh, uh, next question should be from Heather and we'll do one last round, Robin, uh, if we can get those questions out. So Director Douglas, uh, do you have a question or comment?
Yes, I have a couple of questions. Kelsey actually asked a bunch of my questions, so thank you for that. Um, one of my questions is on the hybrid model, um, based on the, um, number of cases per ten thousand people over fourteen days in a county. One question that I have been asked by a number of people is even though the numbers are trending upwards right now, if, let's say, for example, today, they start trending downwards and over the next month, before school starts, they continue to trend downwards and move us into the potential for in-person learning for all students. Uh, it, this is just for instance, um, would we continue with beginning with the hybrid model and let the numbers kind of see where they go? Or would we start with an in-person learning for all? That's one question. Um, but I'm going to ask a couple of questions first.
I, I think that's a very tough hypothetical, but, uh,
But it's being asked and so I said that I would ask it and I don't expect a great answer. I'm just.
I can answer right now if you'd like.
Uh, okay. I have a couple of other questions after that.
Yeah, the short answer is no. We're committing right tonight to make a decision on how to start the year. So we would need time to plan to make another change. I, I think Heather even said it really well earlier about being really thoughtful and planful and taking the right amount of time to make that shift. So even though the data might be there for us, I think right now we got to make a commitment to start. And then what would be a natural time to shift, uh, back if the data did trend that direction? Um, and we, we'd be coming back to you with, um, you know, a, a plan for that. So I don't think we could turn it around that quickly to start the year. And, and right now we're asking for a decision to start the year so people know and can make plans.
Okay.
I hope that helps.
Yeah, no, thank you for answering that. I, that's what, um, my understanding of this process was, but because I'm being asked that question, um, I thought it would be good for people to hear from you about that. Um, so my, another question that I have is, um, about the information that we have right now. Obviously the information, the data that we're looking at is a little bit outdated. Um, do we have, uh, information from the Minnesota Department of Health about, um, are they planning any way to give us that information, um, in a closer to real-time model versus so, so delayed? Um, I guess, uh, to give you a better understanding of where I'm coming from, a major concern is, is if we have a, an outbreak of the COVID virus in a particular school or district. Um, families want to know that sooner rather than later. Similarly to when we have, um, like influenza outbreak, if we have more than a certain number of cases, we may take action at a specific school. Um, if you could just talk a little bit more about what were to happen if we were to have a high number of cases in a condensed area.
Yeah, I appreciate you asking. And I'll have Ron respond a little more detail because we've been, between he and I, uh, reaching out and having those consultation calls that we're required to have. I talked to both Commissioner Ricker and Deputy Commissioner, uh, Mueller today, asking, uh, for a little more clarity on just the, the schedule of when we'll get information, right, and, and data. So I know Ron was working on that too. Maybe Ron, I'll let you, uh, share what you know and then I'll, I'll fill in anything that I might, that might help.
Yeah, a couple of things that I, how I would respond, I've, uh, reached out to both the Minnesota Department of Health, but also Hennepin County. Trying to see, uh, a- as well as our cities actually, trying to find out if we could get some, uh, more localized data. Um, I know that there are some specific cities that have their own, uh, public health department, which our cities do not. Uh, there's only a few actually that do. Um, and so the data that we get is from either the county, uh, who's working in close consultation with the Department of Health. Um, and essentially a couple of things that, uh, that I found out is first of all, they are not recommending that school districts use localized data. They are recommending that we use the data from the county, uh, that's provided through the Department of Health and through the county. Unfortunately, they have not been able to give me any indication on when, um, it will be, or, or even if it will be updated on a more regular basis. We have been able to go on and to see that, um, the county actually does publish, um, their, their, uh, case or their exposure rate. Um, that does, is a little bit more updated. And so, um, Superintendent McIntyre spoke earlier about some of the initial data that we're seeing actually has us uptick a little bit more even than what are, uh, what's published, uh, data. And so, um, that's where, where we got that information is specifically from the county. So there is a little bit more, um, recent data there, but again, it's not into that fourteen-day calculation yet. The other thing though, that I would say in, uh, regarding your question, um, a- as it relates to a specific school, we will be tracking and part of that, um, district-wide COVID response team that I talked about in the operational plan, will be, uh, monitoring closely any potential exposure in any of our buildings. And so we can make some localized decisions based on what's specifically happening in, in our building in terms of exposures and we'll work very closely with the Department of Health and they will help to give us guidance in terms of, um, you know, do we close a specific classroom or pod of students and have them, uh, you know, self-quarantine for a, a, a number of days? Or does it make sense to close, um, a whole building or multiple buildings based on what's happening? So that will be kind of, um, kind of our, our localized, uh, process that we'll be evaluating and watching that closely on a daily basis. Um, but then also continuing to, to pursue some of that countywide data that's a little bit more, uh, recent than what we've been given so far.
Okay, thank you. Um, Cory, I had another question for you. You had shared early on in the presentation that we're building this as a temporary model to bridge us through an international public health crisis. And, um, you know, I know that when we first shut down and first implemented our distance learning plan, we were thinking it was going to be much shorter term than it was. And then it be, ended up being the rest of the school year. And I think everyone was pretty hopeful that we would be, um, returning to a traditional school year this fall. And that is not the case. And, um, I guess what I'm wondering is as we continue to develop this program and how we do distance learning and how we address, um, unexpected circumstances like a pandemic, how are we making this program sustainable um, and effective if it ends up being less temporary and more permanent than anticipated?
Pull out Cory's crystal ball moment, huh? Yeah. Um, and, and what I meant by temporary, I, I think of it a little bit in the grand scheme of things over time. You know, this is a window of time. That could be a couple of years, but it is you know, from a, how we do school, uh, piece, we all believe and want to believe at least that we'll eventually, whether it's two months or two years, get back to some, someone's of a real true in-person model. I, my, my first reaction to your question is as we do this and gain more experience, we get better. So the example is what we did last spring with distance learning. We are much better equipped now to do that than we were, uh, in March. Uh, we have learned a lot. We asked for information. We, we discontinue to improve ourselves through our improvement processes and continue to collect more information to make us better. So, uh, as, if, if time continues to march on, I just believe we will only get better at whatever model we're in. Uh, out of necessity, if anything else. But we, we are believe, uh, wholeheartedly in this district about continuous improvement and a, a, a real systemic way of evaluation, collecting data. We're, uh, we're trying to do better at that and that just program improvement. So you heard Jeremy and others talk about and even Anthony, we, we pulled data on our experience from the spring, using that to make, make that better in our distance learning academy. Or if we end up in a distance learning model, we will be doing that much differently than before, just a few months later, right? So I guess that's my best answer, Heather. I don't know if that really answers it other than we are, we're learning what we do really well. We're learning what we're not doing well. We're changing, making changes from our actions.
Thank you. I have one last question and it is about. Thank you. I have one last question and it is about our um, our families that need before, after-school care or um, childcare during the days that their children are not in school. So if we assume that um, we're doing approximately 50/50 on the A day and B day, and we have 31% of our elementary age kids that need childcare and we're hoping to be able to provide that through KidStop and other means, that's a really high number of kids in the buildings on a daily basis. How are we going to accommodate 31% of uh, before and after-school childcare and during the day for those families that need it while accommodating our students that need to be in school?
I'll, I'll see if Carrie wants to start. Um, and Brian, maybe you want to start? I know um, I've been watching Brian work his magic here the last few days and wrestling with this question.
Yeah, so we're um, the first answer is around that we will be providing care. I know that a number of community members were even asking if we're going to offer it. So we will be offering it in all the components that you mentioned, Heather. One of the reasons we're doing our survey is to really try to get a handle on how many people will actually sign up, right? So for instance, this summer, we provided summer care. We typically serve 1,200 to 1,300 students in that program and 400 signed up, right? So we need to kind of get a clear idea of who actually is going to take advantage of what we offer. Um, I think, you know, now that students will be in, in person in school some days and distance learning school other days, um, that's increasing the need for childcare as more people go back to work as well. And once we get some of that data, we'll be working directly with each of the site leaders to say, hey, we have, you know, 60 kids who need uh, childcare during the school day on their distance learning days. And therefore we'll need four classroom spaces or other designated spaces to provide it. So we'll have to work closely. Some of the ideas that have come up, because you specifically mentioned space. So Anthony already mentioned that we have over 1,500 students signed up for the online learning academy. Well, let's say you're at a school and a teacher gets assigned to an online learning academy. That potentially could free up that classroom that that teacher won't be teaching in that classroom because they'll be teaching on the online learning academy, for example, if there's enough kids who are signed up from that particular school for the online learning academy. So those are just some of the things that we're initially um, thinking about on how to create space. Because yes, on a typical, what we refer to in childcare as a release day, other students aren't in the building. So this is a different complexity that we normally have. But those are some of the ways that we're looking to address it. So still in process, but our goal is to be able to offer it for people who need it.
So I guess um, what my concern is, is if you have um, I, I feel like there's a lot of contingencies involved in there. And I, I know that one major concern that our families have is the number of students within a given space. Would we be limiting or considering limiting the amount of students enrolled in the before and after child school uh, whatever, release days, all those things at sites based on projected numbers of students in the building?
Well, we, uh, we will be, over the, since the spring, we've been um, following a model of pods of no more than 10, but we did just get some direction on pod uh, groupings of no more than 15.
Okay.
I think will be, that'll help us a little bit. Um, we'll also, if, if there's a site that has, we may end up combining, we may have some hubs. If it's a particular school has a lot of uh, students that have signed up for distance learning or have more classroom space, we might create some hubs for those release days on days that parents can pick up and drop off. Obviously, on in-person days, we're going to want to have the students have the ability to go to care in the morning and then walk down to their classroom at the school that they're signed up for versus trying to create another transportation loop. So yes, there are a lot of um, moving pieces right now, but we're, we just started uh, talking to some, we just had a big site leaders meeting today too. So some of these things came up on classroom size as well as um, space in the building, which, which spaces you might use, which spaces you might not use. So tho- those are conversations that started in our large group meeting uh, this morning.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Uh, Director Simons, I haven't heard from you since the first question. Do you have any comments or questions?
Um, I don't have questions. I want to reiterate my complete support for this hybrid plan. I think the bottom line is that our parents have articulated what they want for their children quite clearly. Um, there is an option for uh, families who don't feel that's going to work. The current trends look consistent with what was identified in the survey for families who felt that they might not um, be comfortable with a hybrid or in, fully in-person model. Um, I think there's been a wealth of planning um, that's taken in place. And having seen the updates, having seen some of the most recent documents, providing the space for this to be operationalized at the site level is the exact timeline that we're on and is Superintendent McIntyre identified ahead of other districts. I have complete confidence um, in the plan and the tactics and the execution and the details. And I have confidence that the leadership will provide us guidance along the way. If there's an impediment to us being able to um, roll this out in the most successful manner for students. So I trust that we will be provided updates, that we will have room to make a change if our leadership provides us with that. And I don't feel that um, I have a right to interject uh, personal opinion or bias into this decision. I think it's completely consistent with what the state has provided as parameters. And again, what our families have asked for, what our staff has planned for, what our staff survey indicated and what our leaders have been telling us is best for our students. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Simons. Uh, I think uh, Director Muscata Jones, you may have had a, a question you wanted to follow up on from before. Uh, if you have that question, please ask.
Um, wow, okay. So I just want to ask a couple of questions, actually. Um, does, do you know what 28, uh, this is for Kate, um, Kate. Do you know what 287 is doing and do we, is that going to be a lot of coordination going on? And can we, you know, help with families who have kids in 287 and in ours, kind of balance that out?
They, District 287 uh, stated that they were going to start in distance learning and they have a team that's working on that. Uh, so I'm, yes, we can coordinate. We have been, we have another meeting tomorrow. Troy Schreifels and I and others in the district have been meeting with District 287 off and on all summer. I gave them um, some heads up on our planning because we are the largest district for them. And Heather, maybe you've got some insight because you sit on their board, but that is uh, that's what they're planning right now. And
Yeah.
No, they're not?
No, I'm just, sorry.
Oh, gosh, wait, what? Okay.
No, the biggest concern was there are parents that have kids in both our district and 287. And so they were more worried about if they're doing hybrid as well, that they would be on the opposite days. So we don't have to worry about that particular thing. So you answered the question that the parents
Not at this time.
Have. And then the other question I have for you, Kate, is um, we indicated that some kids with special needs um, might be here um, for four of the five days. And that, so my understanding is they would be in a group A or a group B and then on the other days, they would um, join their, their um, their peers for the online on the other day, but still be onsite. Is that correct?
Kirsten talked about this as well. So the kids that I'm referring to for more than just the A or B day for them to come all four are the students with disabilities that are more severely impacted and have not benefited as greatly from our distance learning. I believe that students in our connect skills and possibly strategies, I don't know, teachers will make um, individual decisions on that one, that they need more um, um, individual or in-person attention.
So that would be um, probably several of our more self-contained or
Absolutely. Skills, connect and possibly strategies, yes.
Sure, sure. Um, I just, um, I want to say that um, this is a difficult decision, I think, because I've been hearing from families um, across the board. I do um, know that you all, or that Corey meets with MDH on a regular basis. I do not have the expertise of a um, epidemiologist. Um, and um, I trust that our experts will make the best decisions for us. I do um, feel like it's my responsibility to ask as many questions as I can so that our um, our, our public is um, as informed as they possibly can. So I have a, a few um, requests. If we can um, you know, once, once this is agreed upon or not, um, and I'm indicating that I'm going to um, uh, support this, is to think about perhaps from a teacher's perspective and a parent's perspective. To roll in um, like for the first week, maybe just freshmen go for the first day and then add the sophomores for the second day, something like that, so that we can have staff to really help with um, once we get one grade really figured out with the, with the protocols and maybe the second grade, that kind, that kind of thing. Just a thought. Um, totally up to you. You guys are the experts. Um, and then to provide a question and answer for staff and for families, I've, I've received probably about 150 different questions from both staff and families. And so I don't want to sit here and ask every single one of them because our um, this, this is important. And so um, I think for the um, sorry, I just have to gather my emotions for a second. Um, I think for what is best for our um, district and our families is that um, they are able to ask questions and that they get the most up-to-date answers that they possibly can. I know um, that it's difficult because we do not have all of the details. I know that we have to go forward. I'm a teacher. We want a plan. We have to figure this out. I have faith that our teachers will be able to figure it out. They have my um, support and love because this is going to be difficult for all of us. Um, and so I just um, sorry, Mike, you threw me. And um, yeah, I guess I'm just going to leave it at that for now.
Jackie, if I can jump in, I really appreciate you saying that. One of the four things that we have been um, trying to use as some guiding principles as we move into the year is, one of them is giving and accepting grace from one another because it is so tough. We're, we're really challenged by this. Um, the other three were being flexible, relationships and connectedness, and then best quality instruction. And we were just trying to keep it simple and really let those four principles guide how we move forward. And I um, I think even by the middle to end of this week, we'll have so much more information available to answer. I, I want, I have, as my, a parent myself, I have a ton of really uh, specific questions myself. And we, I couldn't agree with you more that we're, we're just trying to play catch-up with, with the demand of information um, and getting that out there so that all of you and all of our, our staff and we, we can direct people to one common place where it's all reliable, consistent information versus getting bits and pieces that creates misunderstanding and then uh, lack of clarity. So um, you've kind of heard Barb talk about that a little bit earlier. So I, I think you are asking for exactly what we are striving to do. And and um, your feedback that the board has given us tonight really helps us kind of dial that in and focus it even more. So I'm just thankful that you asked that question.
Thank you. Is it, yeah, yeah, Heather, do you have a, I just want to do final questions. So Heather, any?
I do not have a question. I just wanted to jump in um, as the district liaison um, who serves on the District 287 Board. I just wanted to jump in and share that we did have our special meeting of the board actually on Thursday, July 30th, um, where we did, um, as Kate said, make the um, decision to move to distance learning. And we heard from our executive leaders, our assistant superintendent and our superintendent um, as well as Dr. John Voss, who is the Director of Teaching and Learning. And um, we really made that decision based on the specific needs of our district. It was a very difficult decision to make. Jackie, as you pointed out, the needs of the kids in um, District 287 are um, different than the needs of all of our students here in 279. And so I just wanted to share that that meeting has already taken place. The decision has already been made. And our plan is to work um, as cooperatively as we can with home districts to make sure that all needs, um, all students' needs are met. So I just want to share that.
Thank you, Director Douglas. Director Adasa Malton, you have any final questions?
Yeah, my phone cut out, Director, excuse me, Director Douglas, did you say there, what is 287 doing? It cut out for me.
We, sorry, we are doing a full distance learning model.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, I think, you know, thank you. I, I guess my final comments would be um, this is the time we need to ask questions. And um, and this is engagement. This is community engagement. Every single question I asked was because I was asked that. And um,